Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council workshop meeting on Monday, November twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four. The city council thanks you for being a part of our city government at workshop meetings. The council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Agenda packets for those present are available on that small table immediately as you enter to the right. And for those joining us online at www.paco-pasco-wa.gov/agenda. Meeting is also streamed live on PSC channel, uh, PSC TV channel one nine one in Pasco and in Richland on our Facebook page, on our website, on our YouTube channel and via GoToWebinar. This and previous council meeting of videos available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments or ask questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Pasco, Ask Pasco app. Ms. Clerk?
Yes, uh, council, council members Brahas.
She indicated she was joining remotely as she was not feeling well?
Yes.
Um, why don't we?
Continue on.
Continue on and Mr. Rice, if we get her up, we'll circle back.
Thank you. Uh, council member Blaisdell?
Here.
Council member Grimm?
Here.
Council member Harpster?
Present.
Council member Prowlus?
Present.
Mayor Protem Melney?
Present.
And Mayor Serrano?
I'm here. Uh, before we do the pledge of allegiance, it looks like they got her, but let's just check.
She's online.
Okay, um, council member Brahas, we're gonna go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance if, uh, maybe speak up after you hear us himself?
If you can all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Uh, council member Brahas, any luck? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there we go. We got you.
Present.
Alrighty, well, uh, with that, that moves us to item number four, which is our verbal reports since we had you. Ms. Brahas, did you have anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Hopefully you're feeling better. Mr. Harpster?
Yeah, I know a lot of us were at some of the events I'll mention, but I'll take them since I don't go to many. Um, first one was the ribbon cutting for the, uh, new water reservoir off of Route ninety. Very well attended by public work staff and, um, council members, including Mayor Serrano, Mayor Protem Melney, Councilman Prowlus and, uh, Councilman Grimm. Um, I did wanna give a shout out to Brittany Whitfield, one of Public Works engineers for, um, sort of walking me through, uh, everything that was inside of there and, um, I told her and Director Sarah, and I'll, I'll share it here, uh, that, uh, I'm not an engineer, I don't work in public work, so I thought that, you know, the tank was full of water from the bottom to the top. And when I got there and saw the doors, I was like, oh, that's to let the water out a little bit at a time. But Brittany explained to me that's not how it works. Um, but, um, very cool project and, uh, excited that we got that done ahead of and anticipation of a lot of the growth that will occur out there. Um, and then secondly, attended the state of the city's luncheon with, uh, Tri-City Regional Chamber of Commerce. And, um, thought Mayor Serrano did a great job presenting, uh, on behalf of the city. And it was nice to do that around Thanksgiving time. It does, um, you know, make me thankful for everything that we've accomplished, both staff and council working together. And, um, I think at least for me, it's easy to get buried in the frustrations and agitations that just come up each week and forget of, you know, forget all the things that we've accomplished throughout the whole year. So, um, that was great and like the, uh, the video that the communications team put together. And, uh, Mr. Lincoln did tell me that he loves doing those videos and he'll, he'll wants to do more, so for what it's worth. Right. And then, uh, attended today the ribbon cutting for, uh, Home to Suites Hilton and let somebody else add some more commentary on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster. Ms. Blaisdell?
Um, I just wanted to give an update on Reese Across America. We have a total of five hundred and forty-three sold. So remember at the beginning of this, we had twenty-two sold. So we've definitely made some, um, ground weight. So I just wanted to mention the following people. Um, there's a Amazon, Lord's Health, Kwanis, um, our very own Dan Doda, um, purchased quite a bit, Griggs, Dust Devils, a numerous amount of City of Pasco staff, um, J and J Kelly Construction, Arch Two Engineering, Pedvorik Count, uh, Consulting, Benton Franklin Fair, Bowden Construction, Big Bend Electric, McGill's Restaurant, Alfred Custom Ag, Franklin County, Sean Sant, Milne Power Tools and the Prowlus family. So thank you. We have about three hundred and ninety-nine to go. So if you haven't bought your Reese yet, you have until November twenty-ninth is the deadline. So thank you for everyone that's purchased them thus far.
Thank you, Ms. Blaisdell. Mr. Prowlus?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, attended a lot of those, uh, ribbon cuttings in the past week or so. Um, and I also attended the Chihuahua football game on Saturday. They won and so they will be playing in the state semis on Saturday. And if they win, they go to the state championship. So if you guys are available, uh, well, it's on the other side of the state. Um, so unfortunate, I, I don't think a lot of us will go, but we'll, we'll support them. And if you guys can, you can probably stream it, so.
That's up in Sumner, right? If I recall? Yeah, it looks like our team's rolling through. So God willing, we can, uh, celebrate them either at the very end of the year, the beginning years, champions. So if that's an impetus to them, you know, maybe we'll communicate that. Happy to do some sort of, uh, proclamation to celebrate them. I always love seeing our young people succeed. Um, aside from everything that was shared, uh, I did attend a Tri-City's National Park Committee meeting. Um, that's obviously talking about the B reactor, its historic value. Um, there's a lot of work that's gonna be done. So it looks like the B reactor tours, if I understood correctly, are gonna be closed down most of next year and the following year. Uh, they're doing some work on the roof and then some fancy word for grouting. Um, and that's not like grout that they do with the waste. That's like actually doing period-based grout in some of the tile work or something of that nature. Uh, so the comment that I understood was tax dollars are being spent, uh, at a high rate on that particular project. So, but it is what it is to keep it period relevant. And, um, you know, they're looking at trying to flip the virtual tours, things to keep that tourism rolling. Um, so I think be on the lookout, maybe there are ways that we can share the, the kind of wonder and the value of the B reactor with our friends, uh, before it gets back online to in-person tours. And then something also about the restrooms possibly, so. So yeah, it's been a busy week. Uh, it's good to be back in the saddle and attend these events and, you know, work with the public again. With that, we're gonna move on to item number five. Now, these items are the items for discussion with opportunity for public comment. If you recall, the rules of public comment are, we have up to two comments per side, either pro or con. In other words, um, for a total, each up to two minutes for a total of eight minutes. So, um, you do not have the opportunity to cede your time. So if you make a comment, uh, at a minute, doesn't mean that the person following gets three minutes. Uh, just up to two comments, again, for against. And with that, item, uh, five A is an update to the ordinance amending Pasco municipal code. Title twenty-five related to the state environmental policy or SEPA thresholds. That's gonna come from Deputy City Manager Sigdel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a continuation and essentially a step one of implementation of the development review process that we've been going through with, uh, Elizabeth Garvin. Uh, and she came and talked to you earlier this month, um, to talk about all of the short-term, medium terms and the long-term things that, uh, staff and council needs to be paying attention to and implement, uh, to make sure that our development processes are efficient, uh, clear and predictable. And what you have in front of you today, and I will be relying upon our uh, land use and zoning advisor and our former, uh, community and economic development director, Jacob Gonzalez, who's home sick today, but will be presenting remotely. Uh, and also, uh, our, uh, attorney who is assisting us with some of these projects, uh, Bob Sterbank, uh, from Foster Garvey, who is also online. Um, so any questions that I'm not able to field, uh, Jacob and Bob will be able to address. You will see some, uh, key items here. Uh, there's two options available to you. Um, it is completely up to council on how you wanna move forward. Uh, but essentially there are, there's still some work in the commercial and industrial standards uh, that staff needs to do, that we plan to do in the next three months. Uh, and, um, and the option that you have is to be able to wait for those three months and come and do a more comprehensive changes to our SEPA threshold. Uh, but at this time, we're definitely ready to go with residential. So with that, uh, I'm going to introduce Jacob, who is online today.
Uh, thank you, Deputy City Manager Sigdel, and greetings, Mayor and members of council. Uh, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. And, uh, hopefully you get better soon.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So, uh, just a quick background on SEPA. Uh, it's a, uh, a regulation that's, uh, was enacted, uh, back in nineteen seventy-one. It helps cities like Pasco and others across the state, uh, assess the environmental impacts of projects and decisions. Um, it looks at the environmental impacts of our decisions. It's applicable for a variety of proj- uh, projects, both public and private, public facilities, various regulations, et cetera. Um, it, uh, one of the things that we wanted to move forward with is, uh, taking advantage of some of the recent SEPA reforms that have been allowed, uh, through some state legislation changes. On the next slide, um, kind of it provides an overview of, uh, sorry, next slide? Thank you. Um, one of the reasons that allows jurisdictions to take advantage of the exemptions now offered is due to the, uh, the, the factor that there's other codes and standards that are now in place that help address the environmental mitigations. Um, at a high level, those are things like the shoreline management, uh, program that the City of Pasco has or the stormwater, uh, regulations that we have in place. So in some ways, SEPA is no longer the primary tool for mitigation. We've got other codes and standards in place to help ensure that the environmental, uh, piece has been taken care of and reviewed correctly. Um, there's also other, uh, state law in our own local codes that, uh, require the public engagement, uh, process to move forward and, and, and happen responsibly. So that, uh, it takes care of another mitigation with respects to notifying our public, um, and key stakeholders about, uh, projects that are taking place in the city. And then, uh, I wanna talk about today, some of the categorical exemptions that, uh, the state now allows, uh, for cities to take advantage of. So on the next slide, uh, this is currently the list of categorical, categorical exemptions that, uh, the Washington Initiative Code and the RCWs allow cities to take advantage of. And, uh, just, um, uh, for reference, at the local level, at the City of Pasco, uh, we require SEPA for, uh, residential projects that exceed four. So if you're building four or more, uh, single-family dwelling units or four or more, uh, multifamily units, uh, a SEPA is required. Uh, the state allows that to be significantly higher, um, as you can see here. Uh, another example that, uh, uh, we deal with quite a bit, um, in the planning side and the permitting side is that the state does allow, uh, projects that excavate, uh, less than, uh, one thousand cubic yards to be exempt from SEPA. In Pasco, we only exempt projects that are below a hundred cubic yards. So that, uh, then accounts for a numerous amount of very minor projects that end up having to go through the SEPA process um, that aren't, um, uh, really too, uh, on a major level. There's also some provisions for exempting projects, uh, based on square footage, uh, and parking. And one of the things I do wanna call out though is that you'll see on the last, uh, bullet point there that, uh, these provisions, uh, we can take advantage of them if we've ensured that, uh, there's been adequate environmental protections, uh, uh, put in place. Uh, that's, uh, taking advantage of both what's available at the state, uh, level, but certainly what we have in our own municipal code. It, uh, requires that we document our outreach with, uh, agencies, including the Washington State Department of Transportation on impacts to state-owned facilities. So our, our, uh, highway facilities, et cetera nearby. It requires a pretty significant robust public, uh, and travel engagement process and notice period. Sixty-day notice is required and it also requires that we have, uh, in our own code, protections for cultural and historic, uh, resources. Uh, on the next slide, I kind of wanted to outline the, um, uh, the current status and potential options that we, we could move forward based on direction from council. And as Deputy City Manager, uh, Sigdel mentioned, uh, the state, the City of Pasco has adopted a fair number of, of updates to our, our zoning code with respects to housing and residential developments over the past several years, including a fairly, uh, robust housing action implementation plan. Um, we don't have that same level of, of, of work completed yet for non-residential uses, uh, to account for the industrial development or some of the commercial development that we have experienced or those that we could see in the future in the pipeline. And so, uh, that staff feels, uh, much more confident that we would be able to satisfy, at least be closer to meeting the requirements that the state requires for projects that have a residential component, uh, while, uh, whereas on the non-residential side, um, it is likely that we'll need to evaluate our code to assess whether there's some updates to the municipal code standards and then obviously the public engagement, um, uh, that would be required to move forward with any of the non-residential exemptions. And so, uh, really, uh, one of the, the, the key questions that we have for council this evening is, uh, if, uh, council would like us to move forward with pursuing, uh, a phased approach that would allow us to confirm that we can comply with the requirements and move forward with, uh, the residential aspects of the exemptions that you saw on the previous slide. Or, uh, if council wishes, uh, staff to pursue a more comprehensive approach and, uh, uh, consider both exemptions, residential and non-residential concurrently. Uh, the residential one would obviously be something that staff could move forward with and, and have some, uh, significant progress made in early two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas on the non-residential side, that would probably be an item that takes a, a couple of more months due to the, uh, engagement efforts that would be needed, not only with our own local development community, but certainly meeting the public engagement requirements, the sixty-day notice, et cetera, as required by, uh, the state of Washington. So, uh, just wanted to provide a, uh, a short update for council on where we're at with that. SEPA is a process, uh, that staff, uh, deals with on a daily basis. As, uh, presented by Deputy City Manager in a previous meeting, uh, the City of Pasco by far issues the most amount of SEPA determinations, uh, between Pasco, Kennewick and Richland. Uh, for example, in two thousand and twenty-three, Pasco issued one hundred and fifty-four SEPA determinations. Uh, the majority of them are, are determinations of nonsignificance, meaning there's no mitigation required. Uh, whereas, uh, Kennewick and Richland, uh, issued less than seventy. So we're more than double on SEPA determinations, uh, on a yearly basis. And looking at two thousand and twenty-four numbers, that may be even higher, given the construction activity uh, that's taken place in Pasco. So, uh, taking a look at our exemptions may allow us to also be a little bit more efficient with staff time and staff resources and also, uh, have some flexible opportunities for our development, uh, uh, community and also just, uh, businesses and homeowners in Pasco as well. So, uh, quick update on this. And then, um, of course, we've got our assistants on, on, um, the call as well to answer any questions from council. So, uh, thank you so much and happy to answer any questions that I can for you this, this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Appreciate that. Um, Ms. Sigdel, do you have something for?
Yes, I, I would like to clarify. Uh, we, we did plan to bring this back to you for, uh, review and approval in early January. However, um, we've been advised that we have to provide notice and then sixty days after that notice, we'll be able to adopt it. So I just want you to be aware that, um, we're looking, even for, if you were to go with option one and pursue the phased approach, you're still looking at that sixty-day period. So very likely this is going to be, um, so Ja- December, January. So probably first to second week of February to come to you for, for adoption.
Do we happen to know if a second notice would be required? For example, if we were to move forward with the residential only and then, um, down the road, say it took ninety, a hundred and eighty days, whatever for the commercial, industrial or, or just the commercial, I guess. Um, would there be a second notice or could we comprehensively notice all of it?
Uh, I believe this would be a perfect question for Mr. Ster- Sterbank.
Uh, thank you, Deputy City Manager, and good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Bob Sterbank. I'm counsel at Foster Garvey, uh, and I'm a, uh, longtime city attorney and experienced land use practitioner. To your question, uh, yes, the city could issue a single notice now. Uh, if you issued, uh, and then act in, uh, via phased approach, uh, there's nothing that would require you to adopt, uh, a comprehensive ordinance. But if you do plan to, uh, adopt exemptions that cover both residential and commercial, it would be prudent to put that in the notice now. Alternatively, if you weren't sure when you were gonna come back and wanted to have a separate public comment process, notice and comment for the commercial side, you could, uh, wait and notice that separately. Uh, it would depend on, uh, sort of the timing of the anticipated review and action on the, uh, commercial side. Uh, if there are additional, uh, regulations and amendments needed to the city's code uh, for, uh, commercial site plan applications or approvals, uh, of that sort, there will be needed, uh, public comment opportunities, uh, for that development regulation in any event. Uh, so you could do it separately as part of, uh, the SEPA notice as part of that, where you could do one SEPA notice now. You have both al- alternatives before you.
Thank you, sir. Um, do we have, uh, other questions or comments by council? I'll, I'll kick it to you first, Ms. Brahas, and we'll go from there. If you have any comments?
No questions for me.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Prowlus.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, could we possibly just do two notices? One for residential and then one for commercial?
Uh, yes, uh, we can, we can definitely do that. We'd have to wait sixty days for either one of them. Um, the approach with, uh, with commercial and, uh, industrial, uh, standards would be that we would prepare them. We would, uh, have to do some outreach with our development partners and then come back to you with, um, with a product that we would need to put within our code. Uh, and, um, and I will, and we can come back and give you some updates on when we can do the notice. The, the only, uh, disadvantage of having two, uh, different notices is that you have to then wait for the sixty days, uh, for that, um, code to be active.
Okay. I guess with that being said, I think, uh, phased approach would be better than we could do a, a notice for the residential, get that in the pipeline and then come back when you have the updated codes for their commercial and industrial. And then we can do a notice then. Um, I mean, I would like for us to move quickly on this, you know, perhaps have, at least for the, in commercial and industrial, get it noted so that we can potentially implement that and probably around March time. I mean, that, that would be my, um, preferred.
Yes, um, I'm, uh, I'm struggling to answer that question a little bit and maybe I, uh, we can come back to you with it. Where, uh, where I'm thinking right now is, do we need to have those standards, um, a proposed set of standards and then, uh, give out the notice? And maybe that is not the case. So we, we could give out the notice all at once and then work through, um, as Mr. Sternbach, um, mentioned, work through the standards for commercial and industrial, which then allows us to act quickly once those standards have been agreed upon.
Okay. I mean, wh- whatever way you wanna skin the cat, I think what, if we could just, um, get the ball rolling, I think that would be the best. I mean, I'd hate to see this being, uh, some of it implemented like in April, May, June. I mean, um, you know, 'cause I guess my other follow-up question would be, once those change, could an applicant, would they, in order to, um, use the newer codes, would they have to reapply and, and with their application? Or would they be having to go with the older code that we have on the books?
Uh, I can get back to you on that.
Okay. Um, I think other than that, and so that's my, um, preferred option, phased approach with the residential moving forward and then gathering more information for the industrial and agricultural. Thank you.
Um, I, I will add that our goal, as we, as we found that our code needed a much more robust commercial and industrial standards. There are some things that we've already done, like drive-through standards that we can bring back, that is already prepared, uh, for your review. And, um, and then work on some of the other items, um, look at what other cities are doing. And maybe, uh, again, this is not, um, we can pick and choose on, on what we would like and bring something to you throughout the next, um, three weeks or three months, um, and also do some outreach with, um, our communities and see, uh, whether, uh, that passes the muster or not. Um, and if there is a need for a lot comprehensive approach, um, there are cities out there that have quite a bit of detail on what they would like to see, uh, in their commercial sector. Um, I'm not sure if there's an appetite for that with council, but if, if there is, we could come back to you in a year or so and improve upon what we already have.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Grimm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gonzalez, thank you for being online, even though you're kinda sick tonight. Just a point of clarification. You said the seventy SEPA determinations for Richland and Kennewick, was that combined between the two cities or was that each city?
Uh, that was each city. So, uh, uh, in two thousand and twenty-three, Kennewick issued sixty-nine SEPA determinations and the City of Richland issued sixty-one. Pasco issued one hundred and fifty-four.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Yeah, that's still a significant difference. I just wanna make sure I was following that correctly. And then, um, uh, Ms. Sigdel, you had mentioned, or in the report here, it says that, um, we're still waiting for public engagement, um, efforts to be done for the non-residential exemption. But what do the stakeholders think of where we're at so far? And how does this compare to our neighbors across the creek, what we put together?
Um, that is something, they, they would really like for us to be a little bit more consistent with our neighbors. And so that is what we've heard loud and clear. Um, but our neighbors are also not quite consistent with each other when it comes to commercial or industrial standards, just because desires are different. So we need to do a little bit more work on what fits for Pasco um, and what council would desire and what our communities would desire. We did not go into that detail in those discussions. Um, those details were mostly, um, around our SEPA threshold being too low. Uh, and I'm sure that was for all, um, areas, like commercial, residential and industrial. Uh, but, um, we focus largely on the fact that it is too low. So we need to go back and, um, we need to have something to start with, uh, and ask if, um, if this is what they're thinking in terms of commercial and industrial standards. Mostly commercial because there's fewer industrial projects that, that happen overall.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Mayor, I would agree with Councilmember Prowlus that, um, the, the phased approach, just getting on this as soon as possible would be the, the approach that I would be also for, rather than waiting to do them concurrently. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll give some thoughts and then I see Mr. Prowlus, your lights on.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll just make a quick comment. Um, I, I mean, the development community, I, so when some of these changes were coming forward, I sent an email to about, I don't know, thirty-five of them. And all I, the, all the emails I got back were, this is great. Um, this is more in line with, uh, with exemptions. Um, I didn't hear anyone say, oh, no, we want more red tape. What are you doing? Um, you know, so I, I think we could send the emails out, we can have meetings, but I think a lot of them agreed that this was, uh, a great sign from the City of Pasco and, and they're ready to move on this and this is something that they want implemented. So we can have a meeting, but from the individuals I talked to, they wanna see this happen and happen now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just kinda closing the loop because I know staff's looking for direction. Um, I'm of the opinion that we would want to pursue a phased approach. Um, but if we can give, and, and I think I understood this from Mr. Sterbank, maybe I missed this, fundamentally concurrent notice that doesn't give specific dates, just that we're looking for comprehensive changes, like fundamentally, we're noticing the comprehensive activity. We know that we're gonna hit the residential first and then have a single notice. And if we wanna do more notices that are more in the minutia, so be it. But the statutory sixty days, in my opinion, we should, yeah, again, if Mr. Sterbank had caught this right, we hit it with one notice now for all approach. And then we conduct activity under the, the first ready approach, the, the, the residential stuff, um, in the next sixty days. And then however long it takes, under the same notice, we would want to then conduct the commercial down the road, rather than noticing twice. Did I understand that's correct? We could issue with single notice? Again, Mr. Sterbank, just wanna confirm that I got that right.
My apologies, I was muted. Um, you did understand correctly. You could do it that way, as you just articulated. Um, it would be helpful if the notice articulates the intended, uh, exemption levels that you plan to consider, both for residential and commercial. Um, but then you could proceed. Both for residential and commercial. Um, but then you could proceed separately with consideration of the concurrent. Uh, commercial, industrial zoning code changes along with, uh, then when you move those exemption thresholds forward in the second phase.
Okay, then it sounds like if I understood correctly, staff, I mean, I'll be ready to have that full concurrent notice.
Uh, I think we can do that. Um, we, we just want to make sure we have some details, but. Uh, I think we have enough on what your desires might be and we will make sure to come back to you on a regular basis. And let you, give you some updates on where we're at with the project.
Okay, so I, I don't know if that's Mr. Peralos, Mr. Grimm, consistent with what I was hearing from you. It sounded like you were suggesting two notices, but again, we truncated into a single notice and then any subsequent details we can issue out. Um, but if we can notice everything concurrently, but see, start with the phased approach ASAP. Does that work? Okay, okay, just want to make sure that we're all speaking the same so the staff doesn't get confused or maybe I'm the one that's lost.
Yeah, no, that's the idea, everything, even quicker at that point. Thank you.
Uh, we have a, a fourth and, but you know, not that we're looking for a vote here, but.
Yeah, I concur with everything you guys said. I think that's the best um, way forward.
All right. Sound good from uh, city staff? Excellent. With that, one big lift on. So, we'll move on to item B, which is the presentation of twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six. And Mr. Sternbuck, thanks, and Mr. Gonzalez, also thanks for hanging with us while you're not well.
Mr. Mayor, uh, did you want to open that for the?
Oh, yeah, I apologize. Uh, yeah, with that, uh, thanks for catching me. I was, I was so used to. Now we have an opportunity for public comment on issue A again. Uh, Ms. Francic. If you can uh, state your position, you know, if you've got a hard for. Uh, keep, if you can put the um, there you go.
Uh, Rebecca Francic with Basin Disposal, eleven-ten Osprey Point, Pasco, Washington. I mostly just have a clarifying question. So I've been receiving CIPA notices from the city. And it has occurred to me that as you see developers coming in who are trying to really maximize high-density development. They are forgetting that your utility is also garbage. And so we are seeing some plots come in that there is no access for garbage trucks. So, my question is, if you proceed with the CIPA the way you are. Will we still have an opportunity uh, as your utility to say, whoa, whoa, this plat is not going to accommodate garbage pickup? And the reason I'm asking is, uh, two of the plats that I've recently looked at, um, included plats. And one was absolutely not serviceable. And the other one did not include a plat, but they did include the property layout. And they are asking for high-density and we could immediately see they had no road access. So, at what point is it cheaper for the developer to know that they've got issues? I, I just, I'm just asking, at what point do we insert ourselves as your utility into this process?
Okay, I don't know that I have a specific response to that. I don't know if staff has.
Uh, usually, uh, it's, it's not quite in the CIPA process that you'd see that level of detail. Um, but we can definitely talk about how to bring in BDI into the conversation for some of our uh, plat approvals.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Francic.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for opening this up for public discussion. Uh, I just had a cute few quick things. It won't take too much of your time. Um, I'm here on the behalf of some developers in Pasco and we definitely appreciate staff looking into this. You know, it's always hard to fix the machine while you're also running the machine, so it's great that staff's kind of rolling up their sleeves and getting to some of these issues. Um, I just want to say that the development committee that I've spoken with is in support of the CIPA thresholds being more aligned with the neighboring cities. Uh, just adds predictability and makes us more competitive with the marketplace for people to, to come here and do business. In the way that they could do business in other cities that are nearby. Um, one thing I wanted to note, I read through the packet pretty carefully. And there was some delineation in some of the recommendations between residential and commercial. And I wanted to note that the, that the number of units is obviously a purely residential criteria. But some of the other criteria might actually be shared between commercial and residential, specifically the excavation limits. Um, cause you could have a housing unit or a housing project that might have uh, units that wouldn't ship to CIPA. But potentially that, that excavation threshold might, so I'm just to get that on people's radar and, um, so to be careful, it would be avoid delineating. You know, commercial CIPA requirements and residential and that could cause confusion later on. It might be better to, to kind of keep our eyes open that some of that might overlap. Um, then yeah, I think the phased approach would be good. It sounds like some of it's relatively easy and, and good to go. And then if some of it takes more deliberation, at least we can make some progress, but that's all I've got for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment on this one? Going once, twice, third time. With that, I'll move back to item B, uh, which is the presentation of twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six biennial budget. Uh, Ms. Buckley.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, we are talking again about the budget and this is just a continuation of um, a discussion last week. Um, so next slide, I think, yep. Um, when we looked at the budget last week, if you'll recall, there was a list of items that were. Um, excluded from the budget planning as a way to mitigate expenses. And a couple of those council discussed and had uh, provided direction about additions to the proposed budget. So, what has been added at this point? To clarify and make sure that um, we all have the same understanding. Is that um, a cleanup program in downtown area, so um. This has been o- ongoing for a few years in some fashion or some level, um, and kind of has been a organic. Project, not necessarily lined out, um, and a program that's uh, got boundaries and, and uh, guidance. And so we've added, it's, the increase to the biennial budget would be two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, there is not a specific revenue that supports this spending. There's not a charge that the, the, that is so- is assigned to it. Instead, it would be sourced reported by general fund, um, just general tax revenues that come into the general fund. And in twenty-twenty-five, um, we would set it up as more of a ongoing program or a p- program with some rules. Um, some guidance related to uh, acquiring a vendor through a competitive process. Um, pre- uh, procedures related with the service area and what services are provided or included in that program. And then the methodology for assigning um, services and, and getting work done, so that's been added. Uh, we've also added uh, fifteen thousand dollars to the budget for the park gate closing service at Chilona Park. Next slide, please. And then um, we had a couple, a discussion about police department elements. Um, and these three, you'll see, I'm going to talk about three uh, that, uh, if you'll recall, you asked. For some input from the police department and based on the discussion that you had. And these three uh, were items that council mentioned last week. And, and the priority that the police department responded with, that they would see them. As valued for their operations, so the second priority was continuation of the domestic violence advocacy program. And you can see the impact to the budget there of forty thousand dollars for the biennium. Then priority three, uh, continuation of the citizens academies. And that adds about eighty thousand dollars to the budget. And then priority four was uh, continuation of the abandoned RV impound program. So another twenty thousand dollars uh, for that program to continue into the new biennium. And next slide, please. Thank you. Um, and. You'll, you've probably noticed that there was not a priority one on the first slide and the one we were just looking at at least. Um, and when uh, the police department kindly supplied their list back, their, their priority one. Uh, is related to a dedicated traffic unit and there's a couple elements there. Uh, there would be some vehicle costs that would be ongoing. Um, then purchase of equipment, uniforms and hiring costs that uh, would vary. Now, of course, be higher with new hires and then uh. Lessen through the years. Uh, their vision was to phase those costs in or the, the staffing in really. Uh, which would phase the cost. Um, they would appoint a sergeant that, to run the program and get it up and. And uh, staffed and then uh, two officers in twenty-twenty-five, two officers in twenty-twenty-six. And you'll notice there at the bottom of the slide, you can kind of see um. That as presented, the impact to the biennial budget would be about one point eight four million dollars. Um, you know, that phasing would make a little difference or make a substantial difference depending on when hiring occurred. But with the effect would be an ongoing cost, um, once those employees were all hired of about two to two point two million dollars. At biennium. Um, and that, um, I know we've talked about potential for a levy lid lift. And, and investigating that in the next biennium and. Should a levy lid lift be approved by voter, voters, the impact of this uh, two million dollars or so. On the uh, property tax rate would be fifteen cents per one thousand. And then next slide, please. Thank you. And staying with the presentation or the uh, the way we've looked at this over many presentations. Now or meetings, you can see that for the general fund, we've added the amendments that we discussed last week. So, that is the uh, downtown cleaning, the gate opening, closing at Chilona Park. And then those three police department items, not the dedicated traffic unit. And the cost is about three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Uh, so it, it makes our deficit a little bit bigger. And uh, the estimate of the ending fund balance a little bit smaller. Next slide, please. So, our next steps are um, with council, you know. Concurrent, that those are the items that, that we discussed last week, that you do want to keep in the budget. Uh, the three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars will um, fi- finalize the budget. Come back with an ordinance requesting approval, um, and um, and uh. Be prepared for the beginning of next year. And then if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Buckley. Ms. Brahas, uh, do you have anything you want to apply on here?
Um, actually, I did, I do have some questions, but I'll be forwarding that to staff. Um, my questions are in regards to the uh, changes being proposed by the police department. On slide number, I don't have a page number on here. Um. Yeah, so I'll just be sending in those questions, um, but I do have a question on. Um, the priority number two, domestic violence advocacy program. The cost uh, for this party, will that be shared with the city of Kennewick and Richland? Um, and how much does the grant um, pay for this forty thousand dollars?
Chief's coming up, just in case you can't see.
This is Chief Rosky, uh, Councilman Brahas, for your question. That is the police department, city of Pasco's um, cost to manage and run. That portion of the grant program uh, for s- and, and we bore that cost just ourselves. We don't share that.
Oh.
Part.
Okay, so this is just Pasco's cost. Okay, um, thank you, thank you, Chief. That answers that question. Um, and then quick question on the citizens academy. Um, it's, it's, it looks like a steep number. Um, can we reduce that to maybe having one citizens academy per year? Until we get back into a full budget. I mean, that, that's possibly an option. It's not something that uh, our community wants to hear maybe. Um, but instead of an entirely eliminating it or putting a burden on the budget. Just a suggestion.
Okay. Um, thank you for that. I, you know, I think I'd be amenable to looking at that, having one uh, citizens academy. That save us uh, ch- 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 twenty K per, so it'd be a forty thousand dollar saving on, on the biennial budget. Um, I don't know if anyone else. Mr. Milne's uh, opened that approach. I don't know if anyone has a strong feeling. Yep, as in you're good with that? Yeah, I think the general direction there is we can cut to one citizens academy, so that'll be some sort of savings. Um, all right. Do we have any additional comments from council on this item? Mr. Peralos.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so are we, are we looking to add in the, the extra two officers and what have you? Is that what we're looking to do?
That's what's presented, correct?
They are not in the budget now. The, are you talking about the dedicated traffic unit? They're not in the budget at this point in time.
Right, and that looks like it's going to equate to about one point, it looks like one point eight four million dollars in the, in the biennium?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, I would be in favor of, of that. Um, it would obviously would eat into the reserves, which would what, be about seventeen then, is nineteen? That, I don't think that would, that page was updated, um, that showed that.
Yes, it wasn't that because it's just got the three ninety-five affecting it. You're correct. So yes, it would draw that down by.
Yeah. I, I would be in favor of, of a lot of those things that we're talking about in regards to the police. So the, I'd be in favor of the one um, citizens academy, um, the addition of officers over the two officers and I guess a sergeant over the next two years. If that equates to the one point eight four, I'd be in favor of that and I want to ensure that, that is in the budget. And then also, um, I got plenty of phone calls, um, after the Herald article today, over the weekend. Um, I did a poll or last week, asking the residents what they thought about some of these decisions we're going to have to make. And a majority of them said that we don't want to see police get cut. Um, we're a growing city and with growing cities, we're going to have uh, other problems. And so, um, again, I'd be in favor of making sure that the police department is well-funded. Um, the RV impound program, I think something that also needs to be included. Uh, we just have people coming in here from all sorts. I mean, we're a major transportation hub and people are coming in and. Leaving their RVs in different places across the residential um, areas. And we need to be able to ensure that we're still getting those off the street, so um, those are items that I believe still need to be in the budget. And if it puts a strain, I'd be in favor of that because as we're ensuring s- public safety is paramount. Um, you, you know, and, and honor mine as a council, so.
Thank you, Mr. Peralos. Um, I, so I think I'll, I'll go ahead and respond and anyone else can jump in here. Um, I, I'll be honest, at, at the cost of two million dollars for trafficking, I really struggle there. And I'm going to turn to Ms. Sarah and I don't want to put you hard on the spot here. A lot of these things, like specifically on road, uh, on Court Street, that one hundred plus area. Looks like we're looking at spending dollars to improve the area or, or to make modifications to the roadway. That would already theoretically improve traffic, correct? Or within the CIP?
That is correct. There is a project within the CIP, uh, in the outer ears that involves improvement to that area. Um, there were also proposals of um, smaller investments earlier in uh, time. And then we had those discussions and there is a second opinion underway, uh, since the recommendation did not. Match what um, the public was expecting.
Okay, and then chief, um, you know, how, how detrimental would it be if we were to not fund these particular? This unit, um, you know, as far as the ability to deter traffic?
Yeah, so this, as, as we continue to grow and have um, um, positive expansion across the city. We will need to add police resources. Uh, so we are freezing hiring any police resources in this biennium. This will be an opportunity to get some police officers dedicated to addressing um, the traffic issue that we have. And then um, city manager and I spoke in depth about this, um, and I, and it really just comes down to what. What you're going to be able to afford, um, in, in, in a, in this biennium. As we push this down the road, recognize that um, those officers won't be ma- won't be realized. As efficient in the field for about twelve to fourteen months. So, as you kick the can down the road, as I'd mentioned in my presentation, you're going to have to pay that. It's just instead of being two to three years down the road before you realize them, all, all, all of those five positions. It will be seven or eight years down the road, so, does that answer it?
Yeah, that does. Um. I, I think I'm still of the position that. If we're going to invest in, in roadway improvements and we've got that teed up fairly quickly. I'd be hard pressed to add these bodies now, but you know, as you know, I'm very supportive of our police and fire. Um, I just, I struggle with this cost at this time.
Understood.
But that's, that's one, one vote. Yeah, Ms. Brahas.
I, I do have another question, Chief. Um, um, now that you're at the podium, I have a question for you. Um, how many sergeants do we currently have? Um how many sergeants do we currently have um assigned?
A- across the department, we have uh fourteen sergeants um with uh that includes the patrol sergeants as well as um detective sergeants and and professional standard sergeants.
Okay, um so here's my question. Um I, you know, I, Chief, you know, I support PD wholeheartedly, but I'm with Mayor on this one. The cost just seems uh huge. Um is there a possibility that we could um reassign maybe um the work that some of the um current sergeants do in 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 order for us to cut a little back on the cost? Um is that a possibility?
Yeah, so so as we, you know, I I would, I will absolutely look at that, and I have looked at it. The issue that we run into, if we were a stagnant city or a city that was probably going backwards a little bit, I would absolutely be able to retool some of those. But where we're looking into the future, and I'm trying to ensure the foundation is solid uh as this city continues to uh grow at two and a half to maybe four percent growth a year, those are also demands on the on the police department. So um to limit those areas, I don't think is is shoring up the foundation for the police department going forward.
Thank you for your response.
Do you have anything further, Ms. Bros?
No, Mayor, I I I do appreciate um Chief's response on that. I and I hope I do understand it, but I'm still struggling. I'm I'm right there with you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Bros. I'll slide over to you, Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, Chief Rosky, is there, I think, uh one of your presentations regarding the budget previously, you mentioned, I could be misremembered, the street crimes unit is not fully staffed. Is that right?
S- uh, no, it is not fully staffed. We are prepared to um put the two addition, we have three in there now, two more in there um in late winter as we uh get uh recruits out of the academy into the field. So that that is scheduled to be fully staffed, um but again, late winter.
Okay. Yeah, I uh I'd be of the same opinion of Mayor Serrano and uh Councilman Bros that um my personal preference would be we go with priority two, three, and four, and that's seventy thousand dollars per year, hundred and forty thousand total. And um in two more years, uh consider this more closely from the beginning. Um I think we if if we got every director up here, we could probably get uh ten to twenty million added to the budget. And if we went down this whole road even more, um understand the need, and even just this morning, driving from one town to the other was insane. But um uh unfortunately now does not feel like the right time.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And um no, I just wanna thank the Chief again for meeting with me this week and also our city manager. And we talked about this issue in depth. There was one question I that would have been good to follow up on that I apologize, Chief. I didn't get a chance to in that meeting. Is there an opportunity for like a middle of the road approach here where maybe just a traffic officer is added to a shift? Or does that become too much of a burden for the on-duty sergeant to take care of? Or is there, yeah, another way of building it so we don't get too far, you know, kick the can too far down the road?
Yeah, so that's I think what we are trying to lay out here was a phased-in approach. Um this, you know, we we have four openings now um in the department. These four or five, uh arguably, you're into twenty-seven before you're actually filling all of these positions um that are that are down there. So as these come on board online, we will be um coordinating those, training those, and yes, they will end up probably working under a patrol sergeant for a short period of time, maybe a year, eighteen months, as we fully uh roll this program out over the next twenty-four, thirty-six months. This won't happen overnight. So that's kind of the the approach that you see here is is what you're talking about.
Okay. No, thank you. Um yeah, uh Mr. Mayor, this is this is a tough one. I mean, this is something I would love to see really bad. It's probably what I've heard from the public. Um probably the most significant feedback I've heard from the public is um, you know, more enforcement. Um you know, which sometimes is more officers, sometimes it's, you know, in other ways. So um yeah, th- this would be hard, but in two years, you know, or you know, where where else are the sacrifices gonna be made? I mean, I don't wanna balance a budget on speculation either. Um I think that's one of the reasons we're in this position we are to begin with. So um, yeah, I would love to see us um ease into it, but um, yeah, I don't know. Think about it some more. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Paral, circling back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Yeah, I don't know. I just, I just, when it comes to the cost, I think the cost is kinda just irrelevant. You know, I I just, I think about the speeding issues that I get phone calls about. I think of Mrs. Carl who calls me every couple of months talking about her neighbors, waking her up in the middle of the night, wish we had more officers to go over there and handle these issues, you know? I think about, the the residents live over on Court Street, Bellflower, seeing people racing their streets. And I just feel like we're just because of, we're facing some headwinds. Uh again, I think public safety needs to be the biggest priority here for a growing city. And so, you know, the, when I see kids riding their bikes down Court Street, to me, that's, it's almost priceless, right? I mean, two million dollars to put people out on the street, enforcing our laws, keeping people safe. It it I I would be okay talking to residents, ask me why I still eat up to the reserves because of that was because of those reasons. Um two million dollars does seem like a lot, but I mean, you're putting in process people's lives. And again, we're a growing city. And so for us to go backwards, and I guess my biggest issue with this, and really my root issue with this whole budget was, I keep on hearing about expenses, but nothing about revenue. And how are we generating more revenue? And what's our economic development plan going forward? Um you know, so honestly, right now, I'm I'm a big hard no for this whole budget entirely because I haven't heard of a plan going forward. I've heard about perhaps doing the levy lid lift, transportation benefit district, that's just more taxes. That's just gonna make more people mad at us now. You know, I think we really need to get together and really talk about how we're gonna generate more revenue. You know, we talked about some things earlier. Those are gonna be a great benefit, getting some of the red tape out of the way so builders can start building and and more commercial activity. But I mean, that's the root problem. We need to start generating more revenue. So with that, I'll go ahead and I guess, thank you.
Can I ask what what revenue source is not taxes or fees you'd be looking at? Cause I think we're all ears.
Uh, I mean, if I need to create the plan for you, um I just, I don't know what we're paying you for then, you know?
Oh, understood.
Okay.
Thanks.
I I mean, no, I'm.
Those are the, those are the resources that you have for revenues as a as a city council member. So if you don't like fees, and you don't like taxes, I'm confused what's left.
I'm just speaking out loud. Um these are, these are things that I think a lot of people don't wanna see us do. But I mean, I was gonna wait for a couple other adjustments. Uh I mean, we haven't really talked about even cutting back um some of the staff here. Uh after looking over the stuff over the weekend, I'm not really in favor of some of these two percent or three percent colas. Uh more specifically for the upper management, I think, cause when you're making twelve, fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars a month, I don't think a two to three percent cola is really gonna, you know, what's that gonna do? Actually, a couple hundred bucks a month for the staff. Um you know, if people end up leaving, I guess, that's the prerogative. But I mean, let's then let's have the discussion. I mean, bring some stuff to the table. You brought a couple of things, but you know, again, this goes back to our retreat. Where we start talking about all our ideas, put the earth on the wall, and I just have the inkling of a feeling that we knew we were facing this deficit, and that would have really altered the way that we created that plan. And I'm sure you knew that, but you know, it just wasn't really forthcoming. And so that's my biggest issue. But if it makes money, it makes sense. And I'm okay with raising people's taxes to an extent, as long as we're being effective about it. And if we knew this, we should have been cutting back on uh spending last year and the year before, and just not spending money because seven people sat here and approved the uh previous budget. So that would be my two cents. But I mean, I'm one person, but I know you're trying to single me out because I'm singling out the fact that we're um talking about these ways to uh raise revenue. But I mean, let's have the discussion then. I think we should. Um but I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, what are you doing to create a plan? I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go pay for.
Well, alright, guys, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hop in here.
No, I'll go ahead and I'll I'll just end with that. It's, I don't see the reason why to pay more consultants to do our city manager's job. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Milne.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh to kinda piggyback what uh, I kinda got what uh Councilman Grim was talking about. Like say if instead of one point uh one point eight four million, if you had half that, what would we get? Uh, you know, I mean, what do we get? Something or does it have to be one point eight four million? No, we could absolutely um, you know, take this program that you have over the over the biennium. If if that was two officers, we would plug them into the uh field operations division and um continue um increased attention and focus on traffic and traffic issues. Because those two extra bodies would of course um draw down the time and calls for service that we don't have now. And we can dedicate um some of that time towards traffic enforcement. It just wouldn't be, you know, eighty or ninety percent like a dedicated traffic unit would do, setting us up for the future. But absolutely, um we could use those and make an impact, um understanding that we're gonna roll this in. The other thing is, we appreciate your your continued support. So trust me, these are hard decisions for you. And we don't take whichever way this this budget pans out as lack of support. So thank you.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Uh and I would be, I mean, again, we're trying to save money. We're trying not to blow all the budget. We're trying to, I mean, but I would be for if we cut the program in half, I mean, that would get my vote.
Slow the phase in.
Slow the phasing, uh just try to be, you know, conservative with the money. And but I do realize, I mean, I have the biggest one issues in my district as far as racing.
Sure.
Um just because of the straightaways. So I would like to see some done. I'm not gonna say no, but uh it's also hard to go out and say, hey, we need this kinda cost um citywide, so.
Right.
But you would have my support if it was half of this uh moving forward. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milne. Ms. Blades though.
Um I just have one question. Adam, can you, if we did a levy lid lift, then that would take care of public safety and anything that FIO or the EMTs would need? Is that correct?
You can set up a levy lid lift so that it's targeted specifically for public safety, and then you'd have to set what that threshold is. So I think the analysis that we had done early on was seventy-five cents is uh and it equates to uh about nine million dollars of of revenue. So that makes a pretty significant impact to public safety needs. What the total need is, you'd have to do a little bit more analysis of what what is the PD need for the growth that we're experiencing. Like Ken said, there's, you know, sometimes we have years where there's four percent growth. So trying to keep up with that is, it could exceed the nine million, but back to the napkin, that's a pretty significant impact. And gets you significantly closer to being able to provide the same service level that they have in in Kennewick, at least from a a taxing amount.
Okay. And then with, if we went that route, that would kind of release some of the pressure from the whole budget for the next two years, correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a need to come up with um a a revenue offset that doesn't require us to spend the the reserves to zero over a certain amount of time. So that has to be achieved through either cuts or tax increases. And right now, we're looking at a budget that spends between nine and ten million dollars over the next biennium.
Thank you.
Do you have a position on that by chance? Or not yet? Not yet?
Yeah. M- Mr. Mayor, also, um each of these positions and and for for every director in here, um because they're allocated, doesn't mean we automatically hire them. So any of these positions, even even present ones, um I sit down with the city manager and we talk about continuing need, and I'm sure he also looks at revenue income and what what that's looking like if we're meeting the uh expectations. So just understand that these aren't absolutes. Um we still look at those with the city manager and evaluate each one of them.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that clarification. Uh, Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and I would just come back to say, um I'm in lockstep with, you know, Mr. Milne. If we can, you know, cut this in half or whatever, I think would be the the best approach of us planning for the future, but also trying to be stewards of our funds. Just one one question for you, Mr. Lincoln, just as far as um, just the the, just thinking ahead two years from now, whether we add a traffic unit, part of a traffic unit, no traffic unit or any of this. You know, I'm not asking you so much to look at a crystal ball, but just thinking about, you know, two years from now, you know, where are we gonna end up? You know, whether we add this, obviously, there's a ton of economic factors that are completely beyond our control and everything. But um, you know, obviously, we we can't afford to do this, you know, two years later or four years from now, we are gonna be at zero. So um just if you had any feedback or.
Yeah, I I I think it's gonna take between three and four years to start realizing revenues from from Broadmoor. It's just the the fact that it's almost completely dirt right now, and the fact that we're out to bid for our projects, let alone actually seeing other projects coming from the private side. Um I I I think the conversations with the private development is going well. But again, they they start with letters of intent, they do their due diligence, and those can be twelve, eighteen months periods, and then construction can start. And some of them are are not super complicated builds. I mean, something that's uh more of a grocery store isn't isn't gonna take a long time to build so much as um it's it's gonna be the the parking lot and the the outbuildings that are gonna take some time. But um depending on the complexity, if there's if there's housing, mixed mixed use and things like that, they could they could take longer amounts of time. Um so I I would say that to be conservative three or four years is probably not realistic or not ridiculous to think for the revenue side from Broadmoor in particular. And a Costco would have been about a million dollars a year, so you're gonna need seven or eight Costcos to try and come up with that that delta.
Okay, no, and I appreciate that. And you know, as I've shared with you and Ms. Sigdell before, just for some of these fees that haven't been visited in a long time that, you know, or perhaps wa- way too low or, you know, just as long as, you know, pe- people wanted to be fair. We need to be able to, you know, show the value to people doing business with the city, that if they're paying as much as they're paying in Pasco for across the river, they're getting the same level of service. But if some of those need to be updated, that um, you know, are, you know, uh you know, contributing to, you know, shortfall or whatever, yes, I'd encourage you to um, you know, I guess, I'm only one, but to to bring that back um, you know, to us as soon as possible, if three of my fellow council members would agree. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think where we ended up on this is we've got about a three-three. Initially, it was a uh three for not having the traffic. We had three for split the baby. Does anyone wanna weigh in um on either of those approaches? That's not pushed hard, I guess. Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, I'll add some comments. The uh it is, uh you know, I made my comments known on a couple items like the animal shelter and Pasco specialty kitchen and um I I'm fine being the only one with those specific opinions. But when I, when I think about it more, and I feel like I'm in an awkward spot here with, you know, uh adding police officers and whatnot. But uh if we're gonna have hundreds of thousands of dollars going towards something like the Pasco specialty kitchen, which has a place, and we've got, you know, a couple new businesses out there, that's great. I just, man, it's hard to say no to things like traffic safety. And um like I mentioned this morning, I was just dumbfounded by the amount of people running red lights and just driving crazy. And um I think it it is only gonna get worse if we don't do something. And so while I don't necessarily think this is the correct answer at this time, kinda like uh Mayor Proton Melon was saying, maybe kind of a a phased phased approach. And um I I don't know what that would look like, but I think, I think saying now is not the right time, isn't the correct answer. But saying, yes, all of this, let's do it all, isn't the right answer either. So something in the middle, and I think it's definitely worthy of uh some further discussion. Of course, realizing we only have a couple more weeks to discuss this. And um, I don't know, try to find a a good middle ground that I'm gonna have a tough time if residents couldn't be say, hey, you know, my kid got in a car accident and you voted no on um adding a traffic safety unit, but you voted yes on whatever other stuff uh, you know, that we added. So just some more thoughts have been coming.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Buckley, I see your light.
I just wanted to add that I know it's been a little time since we looked at, you know, we've had many meetings and we've talked about the first budget that came to council and what the values were there. And then we made some amendments. Uh two of the things that we reduced were savings for vehicles and equipment and also those potential savings on personnel vacancies. And the personnel vacancies are about five and five point eight million dollars over the biennium that are not necessarily known. So those are just things that uh are savings that we're hopeful. If there are vacancies, we can make some efficiency changes. We can um have existing remaining staff pick up, you know, add to the schedule that are their workload that they have to to keep up in the meantime, but. Add to the schedule that are their workload that they have to, to keep up in the meantime, but we do have, um. Those savings in that ending fund balance or reserve number that, um. Eff- effectively represent less people working and, um, and aren't known. So, that's one thing that's a, a subjective number that's in there, um, that is meaningful.
Thank you. Ms. Blaisdell.
Okay, I just wanna make one comment, cuz it keeps going through my head with the recent elections. And the way Washington State. Has changed their laws in what, the last four years and has put more. Or has demanded more service from our police officers. Um, and in the district that I live in, I do not wanna see public safety being. Like, it's gonna get, just like, uh, Councilman Harpster said, it's going to. We're gonna need our police officers and then if we. We can't predict the future, but I don't wanna see us skimp out on. Um, and that's probably not the best terminology, but I just wanna make sure that. We don't go backwards. If anything, we, um. Make it a priority and make it all, everybody feel as safe as we can, and I know we will. That's not, there's no any, there's no doubt in my mind, but it, I did not say on record that it is. Um, a priority for me as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lincoln.
Uh, I'd just offer also that if council doesn't wanna come to a, a decision over the next couple of weeks, that there's always the option to do a budget amendment at some point to, to. Um, add or, or make other changes to the budget. So, just, I, I don't want you all to feel like you have pressure to make the decision im- immediately if you, if you don't have consensus.
Yeah, um, I, I think, so my suspicion is we're still at somewhat of a, a, a lock here.
Mayor?
Yeah.
This is Blanche here. Um, I would, I would be on the side of phasing out, phasing in. The officers entirely, uh, I mean, instead of entirely, um, cutting it out of the budget. Um, like Mayor Proton Melanie said, um. Some, some type of a phasing of the officers that are gonna be hard. Um, I agree with Councilman Blaisdell. There is a need in our communities, there is a need in our streets. It's every single street in Pasco needs. Needs some type of supervision. And so, um, her, her neighborhood, my neighborhood. Uh, Melody's neighborhood, we all have issues and we all get assistance when we call in, so we don't want to see a decline. In the response time and, you know, um. Like I said before, as much as we support PD, we wanna make sure that, um. The city is also supported with staffing, the response time is prompt. And safety is, is, should be a priority. Um, so if we can figure out some plan. To phase it in, I, I'm in favor of that.
Thank you, Ms. Braus. So, it sounds like Chief and, uh, Mr. Lincoln, you have work to do, um, more homework. No, I, I mean, I don't mean that flippantly. It, rather than, uh, deciding all or nothing, it sounds like there's gotta be a way to. Target the right, uh, level of growth, I guess. So, with that, I think we have kind of two options there. Um, either you can bring that back if you're intending to bring back the budget for approval on the second. Bring it back and maybe provide us with some thoughts ahead of that would probably be the wisest approach. Get some, uh, responses from council. I'll just call it that. So, any further direction on this issue, Mr. Lincoln, or anyone else? Ms. Blaze though.
I just wanna get, I guess, council's temperature. If we, who would be in favor of a levy lid lift?
For me, I would, uh, I'd want analysis on that.
Yeah, I, I think staff recommendation would be to come back to council and kind of give a lay of the land of, of some options, I think, rather than. Um, making the decision prematurely, just making sure that you guys all have the, 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 the various options. Um, because you'd wanna be on the, mostly on the same page for, for that, especially when you start talking to the public about what, what the pros and cons would be. So, we, we can definitely bring back something early on to start that conversation with you all too.
And that's where we could look at amending the budget midway or partially through. Does that sound good? Excellent. Do we have any public comments on this issue? Going once, twice, three times, we'll move on to item number C or letter C. Uh, that's the twenty twenty-five administrative and professional wage and management salary plans from, uh, City Manager Lincoln.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, so this evening, we've got, uh, a, a few options and it sounds like there might be some, some others to kick around as well. Previous, uh, conversation with council, we talked about, uh, presenting a, uh, a, a two percent COLA. Um, of course, we also gave the, the Kenwick Richland and a couple other cities, um, uh, COLA that was looking at, uh, about three percent. Uh, but of, of course, it's, it's your prerogative what that number should be. Um, this again is for non-represented employees. Uh, we have collective bargaining agreements for, for the, uh, the other units. Uh, and as a reminder, October through October, so twenty-three to twenty-four, uh, CPI was one point seven percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do we have any comments on this as proposed? If not, um, uh, Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would, um, I mean, obviously, we have to give direction, make a decision. I would, um, you know, I, I would be for, um, the three per, the three percent COLA. At least, um, you know, definitely for the frontline, um. The frontline members of the team that are, you know, really customer facing and just really, you know, the one, the ones out on the front. But I think, you know, we need to consider those of us at the, the dais and everything, that even though, you know, our board, our commission here is, you know. Potentially the, the, the least paid of any in the, you know, the tri-cities area, that, you know, we lead by example and not try to. You know, buck for any type of, you know, raise or anything like that. Maybe, you know, lean, lean on some of the, you know, directors and the other. You know, leaders to, you know, lead by example, you know, and show the public that we are taking this seriously and, um, looking at it. So, again, I would be for more of a mid, middle of the road approach there. Um, you know, three percent for the, um, those on the front line and, um, you know, um. May- maybe the leadership foregoing that, including us for the biennium. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, just to make sure that we're clear on terminology, you're suggesting three percent on the. Administrative and professional wage scale, but zero on the management. Is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Braus.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm lock and step with Councilmember Grim. Um, that's exactly what I was gonna say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Harpster and then after you, maybe if Ms. Braus has something, but Mr. Harpster first.
Sure. Um, just sorry to put you on the spot, Director Rice, how many hours on average do you work each week? Forty?
Um, I get that by Wednesday or Thursday afternoon.
Okay, that, that's what I thought. The, for that reason, I know he's not the only one, I would be in favor of three percent across the board. Um, for a few reasons. One, these positions up here are, are hard to fill. Um, you know, there's a big nuclear site on the other side of town where they could all go work forty hours a week, probably get paid more and do a whole hell of a lot less. And so, I just don't think you can go wrong by giving your people more. Um, I think it's rare when people abuse it and I, I don't think that's gonna happen here. Even if employees did abuse it and say, oh, I'm getting paid more, so I'm gonna slack off less, it, it'd be such a one-off. That I think what we more likely see is folks appreciative of that, that despite the, um, budget, um. You know, constraints we're facing, still to three percent, uh, COLA increase would wanna kind of work to earn that, right? And so, um, you know, I think this idea of giving less or none and this idea of it's their prerogative, they wanna quit is, is. Pretty dangerous and, um, I mean, there's one position, we've got Traffic Engineer, it's been open for. Year and a half, longer maybe, two years. And so, if folks start dwindling, again. Thirty minutes, uh, west of here, there's plenty of job openings there where folks could work a lot less hours and deal with a lot less headache. Uh, certainly not have to deal with elected officials. And so, all that said, being in favor of three percent across the board.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Braus and then I'll slide over to you.
I, I agree with Mr. Harpster. Uh, I, I agree with the three percent COLA increase. Again, we have staff that work very, very hard, staff that overdo a lot of the work that they do. Um, and, and go above and beyond. And so, I would agree with the three percent.
Thank you, Ms. Braus. Ms. Blaisdell.
I am a hundred percent in agreeance with Mr. Harpster.
Alrighty, Mr. Milne.
I'd also agree with Mr. Harpster.
Okay, we got four there for direction. I was gonna suggest maybe, uh, two and a one and a half, but at this point, uh, it really doesn't matter. Um, and that being, would have been two on the administrative and frontline folks equals of Mr. Grim, then one and a half for, um, our management team, but. Uh, it sounds like folks, uh, at least the majority of council supports a three percent across the board. Uh, with that, do we have any public comments on this issue? Going once, twice, three times, hearing none, we'll move on to item D. Which is a resolution based on disposal incorporated, twenty twenty-five proposed rate increase. This is coming from Ms. Sigdell.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, um, today we have, uh, more of our annual, um. It reminds me of Christmas, right about this time is when we start talking about end of budget, uh, which was always a fun time for me. Uh, in my previous post and also looking at all of the rates. Um, and what we have is an overall, uh, rate increase from, a proposed rate increase from BDI. Uh, who is our franchisee for all of our solid waste. Um, there is, uh, a long contract, uh, there is, uh, different CPIs that we look at. Um, and we come up with an weighted rate, which is based on that contract, uh, which, uh, amounts to. Two of collection fee increase of two point zero seven percent. Uh, and a tipping fee increase of three point six percent. Um, so overall, the, the impact on, uh, a resident would be for a sixty-four gallon. Uh, thirty-one cent, uh, per month and, uh, for a ninety-six gallon residential car, sixty-three cents per month. And we also have Rebecca Francic, who is a representative for BDI, if you have any questions for her.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any, um, Mr. Harpster?
Just one quick question. One of the notes in the staff report was, or in the contract, was the contractor's calculation, so be, shall be provided to the city. Annually, yada, 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 and city shall have ninety days to confirm contractor's rate modification calculations. So, my only question is, did staff confirm those calculations and find no issues?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
Alrighty, uh, Ms. Braus, do you have anything here?
Talking to us.
Thank you. Um. Do we have, uh, and I'm pretty certain we do, but for folks who are either of low income or specifically, I think, are elderly folks. We have ways to help mitigate any of the impacts to them, correct?
Uh, yes, we do. Usually for all of our utilities and I will let, um, Ms. Francic speak for BDI as well. Uh, for our utilities that the city provides, uh, and for Franklin PUD as well. Utility companies usually provide, uh, senior low income rates that are discounted rates for that population. Okay, so, uh, we mimic whatever it is that the city offers, uh, we offer the same. And so, I, I, you should be clear that what happens is we do offer, uh, a discounted rate. But then it's spread out over the rest of your rate payers. That's how it's recovered.
Thank you. I, that answers the question for me. I don't, yeah. I appreciate that. And I think that's, the main thing is I, I want people to understand that for those who may say, yeah, it's, it's sixty-three cents. But there are folks that really are struggling. There are ways to defer and defray those costs, so. Um, I'm certainly supportive of, uh, adopting this rate increase. Um. I guess in art of brevity, does anyone have any opposition from the dais? Hearing none, it sounds like we're gonna move forward with this. Do we have any public comments on this issue? Going once, twice, third time. With that, we'll move on to item E, which is proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget supplement. And this is gonna be back to you, Ms. Buckley.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, this is one of those elements that is a end of year, uh, recurring. Uh, request. Um, so, as you know, we have an adopted budget and then throughout the year. Uh, different staff members come to council, should it be related to a contract or a capital project and, and ask for amendment to the budget. But there are also options that are, uh, situations where we don't make amendments during the year. We wait to see where we are at year end and review the budget amendment or the amended budget. And the actual spending, uh, complete some forecasting, um, and then. If necessary, ask council to make some, uh, to increase the budget, uh, both on the revenue side and the expense side. Um, and so, that is what we're discussing tonight, um, just to make sure it's really clear, the items that typically are requested. As a supplemental, uh, budget amendment or unbudgeted revenue that have an offsetting expense. And we have a couple ac- uh, examples of that in this request, uh. Amendments that are very low in value if we brought them, uh, one, we wanna wait till the end of the year and see if they're necessary, of course. And then also, if we, every time we thought that there might be potential to raise the budget, we wait, we came to council and asked, we would, uh, we have a busy calendar. And we don't wanna take up time doing that if it's not necessary or in small value. Um, and then just cumulative things where we're doing that review for the whole biennium to see that, you know. It, it did really result in the need for an amendment or a suspected need for the amendment. Um, we do keep our accounting records open for twenty days after the close of the year, so there's time for invoices to get paid. Where a better service has been rendered during the year, so that's part of the forecast. Um, and then it's necessary for us to, to take the step, one, to communicate with council, but also, uh, the RCW. Um, revised code of Washington requires that we have, uh, approval level for expenditures and that we don't exceed that by fund. And then if you could move one forward, please, thank you. So, this is the list of the supplemental requests and I'll work my way through them. Uh, try to be very brief and then if you have more questions, you can ask about it. But, uh, you may recall that earlier in the year, September timeframe, uh, there was an, uh, uh. CHIP program for affordable housing, um, agenda report and this year we did have, uh. A developer take advantage of that grant program and so, uh, uh, we have submitted for the, uh, oh, uh. Reimbursement and so you will see there, the general fund is rece- uh, going to increase the revenue by one point three five million. And then almost all of that will be, um, remitted back to the developer. So, we're increasing both the revenue side and the offsetting expense. Um, our community development block grant fund, um, the, we're just making amendment to the expense side. Because the, the revenues and expenses were out of balance, so this, uh, is just reflecting spending of the awards. That the HUD department has provided. Um, Martin Luther King Center operations, there's, they have a small budget. And so, uh, just by nature of that very small budget, there's not much margin. Uh, and so, there was some update work done on fixtures to install LED bulbs, which in the long run results in utility savings. And then their natural gas utility costs were a little high, and so for those two things, we're adding fifteen thousand dollars just to make. Sure we get to the end of the year with enough authority to spend that if it happens. Uh, ambulance fund, their revenues are higher in transport services. Um, and then, uh, so we're gonna increase the revenue for that, that and, uh, expenses are a little higher related to. One, that revenue, when it is higher, results in a higher, uh, sales tax expense, so we need to increase that budget. And then, um, during the pandemic, uh, of course, there was billing that occurred for those transport calls. Uh, we took a really long time, uh, in care and caution of notifying people. That had not paid their transport bills and, and, uh, tried to be very cautious in that. So, it took us a little longer to get all the way through the collection process. And so, that resulted in the bad debt expense for this year to be a little higher than it would typically be. Uh, I'm gonna skip cemetery cuz it goes with the item on the bottom and I'll talk about them together, animal control. I'm gonna skip cemetery, cause it goes with the item on the bottom, and I'll talk about them together, animal control, we're gonna increase, uh, related to veterinarian services, uh, the animal control, uh, Director Rice has worked with his team to look for opportunities to mitigate veterinarian costs. Um, and so, partway through the biennium, they did hire a part-time veterinarian. And are, um, and so that has definitely made a good change, and then they'll continue looking at options and availability there. You can notice that the op- the higher expense is offset by revenue through our partners at the, uh, animal control facility. We have a couple of items, both school impact fee and lodging, the revenues are higher than budget, and they're all passed through, so, come into the city, we remit them funds that we receive to, um, other organizations, so we increase the revenue and expense for the same amount. Um, our healthcare funds, um, with the addition of staff, the revenue is higher, so that's the revenue amendment. And then as far as expenses, there's a lot of unknowns right now, um, I think you'll recall that, uh, we had a couple items that have delayed claims processing that are outside the city's control. They were a cybersecurity attack or ransomware, um, to a large-scale processing, provider that affected the, the industry as a whole. Um, and then unrelated to that, our third-party, um, processor for our claims specifically, um, filed for bankruptcy, so we have a little, uh, uncertainty about what claims are gonna continue to come through the end of the year. And so we're increasing the budget, one, to take care of the claims that we've already received. But also just to be especially careful that we, there's not a kind of a catch-up and by yet year-end, that, that would be more than we expected, so we're being very conservative in that large number of the four point seven million, of course, if the claims are not remitted to the city, uh, or don't exist, we won't, there will be no offsetting expenses or, uh, or correlated expenses. And then finally, or I guess second to last, uh, we have an old fire pension fund, which, uh, serves fire department retirees, um, pre-left, and, um, they have a cost of living increase partway through the year, and the cost of living, the, the note on the slide is not correct, so I'm correcting it now. Uh, the cost of living increase was higher than we anticipated, uh, by a little bit, at eight thousand dollars. And then finally, uh, we discussed a little when we went through the special revenue funds, that we do have a cemetery endowment fund, which is a perpetual fund. Uh, as people buy, uh, cemetery plots, they pay into the protect, the perpetual fund to help with upkeep and long-scale forever maintenance at the cemetery. We can't spend that, the body of those funds that we receive, but the interest earnings, we can. And so that's moving that interest earnings, uh, from the endowment fund into the cemetery fund as a revenue. So they'll have those dollars to help with operations and maintenance of the cemetery itself. And that is the totality of our supplemental requests this year.
Thank you for that. I, I don't see any lights, Ms. Ross, uh, do you have any questions or comments here?
No questions, no comments.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, just one quick question on animal control, the cost of veterinarian services, is that? Can you explain that a bit, is that just when random operation surgeries, whatever needs?
Um, just overall, all medical, so whether it's an intake where they need medical services or providing medical services to get them ready for adoption, those could be any of those, uh, shots or a neuter spay or any, anything along those items, so medical services in general for any of the animals we handle.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, um, Ms. Buckley, I'm trying to figure out how to exactly phrase this, uh, this is a supplement to a budget that's fundamentally closing out in like forty-five days. So, the money has already been spent, is that correct?
Not necessarily, uh, it's, uh, based on a forecast and looking at the full biennium's budget, amended budget and the spending year-to-date, plus an estimate of the remainder of the year. Um, and what we think is possible, so, um, it's just, we need to make sure that we have enough, enough budget authority, that should we get to that level, uh, we don't end up receiving a finding, because if we spend more, have expenses in excess of the funds appropriations, then we can receive a finding.
Okay, and then, uh, so if this were to come to fruition, fundamentally, we're looking at a delta of negative seven hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
Um, would that then impact our reserves that we're talking about?
This is, well, this is for all the funds, so the own, the reserves, it would, if you look at that list that we were talking about before, they had all of the funds, but we've concentrated a lot on the, the effect of the reserve in the general fund. So the only one that affects the general fund is that, those top two lines relates to the chip program, and it really is a net revenue.
Okay, I gue- I guess the, the final question to make sure I'm fully following here. If we were to realize the, the expensive, the extra incurred expense in totality of, so, negative seven hundred thousand dollars, would that then draw against the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, or it just, this is simply just making sure you have authority? So that when the money's spent, uh, I guess I'm just, like, if I put seven hundred thousand dollars on my credit card, which I, to be clear, I don't have that kinda limit, uh, I gotta find a way to make up with that.
Right, what happens is, I guess there's a couple things I wanna point out, uh, first of all, m- most of the seven hundred and seventy-two thousand is related to the, um, community development block grant, uh, fund. And we've received all the funding, it just was, there was a mismatch between revenues and expenses. So that gets us down to about two hundred thousand, and I think that is offset in animal control with revenue. Um, I think that's the rest, uh, the majority of it. And what does happen anytime expenses are higher, uh, than revenues, we, it would draw our ending fund balance down, which rolls into the next year, so. But, um, of all these, the, the net expense as far as actual dollars, um, is really just the one hundred thousand in animal control. A little extra spending in the, or potential spending, I should say, in the health funds. Uh, we received all the C D B G award money that was spent, so that's a break even, even though it doesn't look like that here. Um, so it, it's not gonna have a big impact.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, just one other item that I forgot, the, uh, Department of Commerce grant, that chip program, so, one point three five in revenue and one point two five in expense, is that a hundred thousand dollar delta administrative processing or?
No, it's, it's paying, uh, development fees, uh, not, not, that were not paid by the developer. That they were, uh, waived for the time being.
Gotcha, thanks. Uh, seeing no further lights, do we have any public comments on this issue? Going once, twice, third time. Seeing none, we're gonna move on to item F, which is resolution, uh, for project acceptance for, for transmission main, West Pasco Water Treatment Plant, or the W P W T P, to Zone Three Project Director Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, tonight we have a series of items that relate to acceptances. So just for context, what we do in these items is we propose to you accepting the work of our contractors in specific capital projects. So for this first one, and we'll do this as fast as we can, um, this is a transmission main going between West Pasco and, uh, the Zone Three of our water system, this, um, the layout is shown, and the way this works is this transmission main will carry water that is treated towards that elevated zone, eventually reaching the new tank that you also finished recently. Next slide, please, we're gonna see some pictures of the work of, uh, Total Site Services, which was our contractor. So we'll see some, uh, during construction, next slide, please. More pictures of construction, it's pretty impressive, huge pipe, lots of miles of pipe, next slide, please. And then a summary of the project, you are looking at an engineer's estimate, there was just under three point eight million dollars. The award was for two point six, incredibly competitive, uh, bid process for this project. Um, change orders were, um, eventually offset with the, um, removal of some items from the project, so it was a net negative, and then final construction cost, uh, on the two point six million, if I can see this slide well. So that is, uh, a summary for this project, next slide, please, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, uh, do we have any questions from council? Uh, seeing none, Ms. Ross?
Sorry, none for me, I'm having to toggle back and forth between my screens.
Yeah, sorry about that, I, and, thank you for chiming in. Um, seeing no comments, do we have any question, or a, a public comment here? Going once, twice, third time, okay. Move on to item G, that's resolution, project acceptance for Argent Road Widening Phase Three, sticking with you, Ms. Sarah.
Good evening again, we're asking for the acceptance of the work of Apollo, our contractor for the Argent Road Widening Phase Three. This phase went between Saraceno and Route Thirty-Six. It came to complete that segment of the widening of Argent, and we're seeing some during construction pictures, next slide, please. And then some of the finished pictures, next slide. And a summary of the project, like we did in other projects, engineer's estimate, three point, almost, almost four million dollars. Beta word, three point four, almost three point five million dollars, overall. There were no change orders in this project, and overall reconciliation for it, once all quantities were accounted for, was negative. Ended up in a, uh, three point four, four nine million dollars for this project, again, accepting the work of Apollo. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah, do we have any, uh, questions or comments from council? Ms. Ross?
None for me.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Harpster.
Just a, a quick one, probably ignorant question, but when, uh, when projects like this are coming in just slightly under budget, and five thousand on the last one, twenty-four or so on this one, what happens to those funds?
Great question, it depends, if it is grant-funded, uh, most of the grants for transportation projects are reimbursable, so we spend the money and then we get reimbursed. So in that case, sometimes there is like money left on the table, as we say. Uh, if it has a component that is funded locally, or it's a project that is fully funded locally, what happens is those dollars, uh, remain in the end balance for the fund that had funded it, say, arterial or streets or, um, impact fees, I believe. And so those stay within the end balance and are allocated at the end of the biennium, when the project is, or when the project is closed out.
Uh, seeing no further comments from councils, do we have any public comments here? Going once, twice, three times. With that, we'll move on to item H, which is resolution project acceptance for Court Street Overlay Project, still with you, Ms. Sarah.
Good evening again, in this case, we're gonna talk about an overlay project federally funded along Court Street. There were two projects that were combined into a single project, one was federally funded, the other one was locally funded, but, uh, provided the massive amount of paving that was going to occur, it was beneficial to bid it as a single project to receive the most, uh, uh, competitive prices for unit ton of pavement. So we're gonna see some pictures of the overlay, next slide, please. And that was very brief, a single picture, um. We're looking at, again, summary of the project engineer's estimate, um, just under three million dollars, beta word, a little bit under that. Change orders in this case, we added some curb, we had to replace some curb that was failing as we were doing construction. We had some storm drainage issues that we needed to correct to preserve the, uh, quality of the pavement and the, and the integrity of the road. So overall, you're seeing total change orders for eighty-one thousand dollars. Um, at the end, you have a total project cost of two point nine six six million dollars. And this was the work of Central Washington Asphalt, and that's what we're asking for approval to accept their work and release retainage and close out the project eventually, thank you.
Thank you, any comments here, uh, Mr. Grim?
Thank you, real briefly, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, as much as we're tempted to groan sometimes when there's change orders or excessive change orders, we do need to celebrate when, you know, three, um, three projects come in below the engineer's estimate, or with the change orders coming as negative, and so, all of my meetings with Director Sarah, I know she cares a lot about the, the city's dollars, the taxpayers' dollars, and, uh, just, just being a good steward of that, and making sure she tries to tie up all the loose ends, and I, and I see a change order coming on Broadmoor, and I see the animal shelter ran a little bit over, but that aside, um, these three projects coming in under budget are worth celebrating, so, thank you, Director Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Grim, uh, Ms. Ross, do you have anything?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Sarah, you mentioned the, the sidewalk was failing, was that prior to or post commencement of the project?
It was curb that was failing, and it was a strict curb place on top of existing pavement. So it wasn't a full curb and gutter, which is the typical. Um, so as grinding was occurring, there were already cracks there, but, but it just got worse. And there was some damage through, uh, drainage that had been happening underneath. So as we uncovered that, we extended the limits of the replacement of that curb to ensure that it was going to withstand the, uh, traffic that was going to occur next to it.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that, uh, to, you know, that way folks know that it wasn't just, we were letting it go, and, you know, it had its, its minor flaws. We worked it and improved it, so thank you for taking that proactive approach. Um, do we have any public comment on this issue, going once, twice, third time? With that, we will move on to item I, which is another resolution acceptance of work for new Pasco Animal Control Stel- Shelter, still with you.
Good evening again, in this case, we are, um, looking at the work of G Two Commercial, and we'll advance the slide to see some pictures. So this is, uh, the Animal Shelter Control Facility Acceptance. Um, this project was awarded for four point two million dollars, I'm rounding, next slide, please. And we're gonna see some before pictures, and next slide, in-progress pictures. And the after pictures with the facility completed, and there's some pictures of the exterior and the interior of the building. There were several change orders in this project, some of those, um, were associated with, uh, adjustments to the building that were identified while construction was occurring. There was, uh, one of those, there was probably the biggest one in the list, had to do with some site conditions that were identified as excavation began for the foundation. Um, and so, overall, and I cannot see the slides, my, my glasses are not good enough, here. So overall, the summary for the project is the engineer's estimate was four point six million dollars, the beta word was four point two, just under one, four point two, change orders accounted to, uh, two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So final total construction cost, four point four two eight. Um, and again, this is G Two Construction, and since they are, they have met their contractual obligations, we are asking to accept their work and then be able to release retainage and close the project, thank you.
Thank you, do we have any, uh, questions or comments on this? Ms. Ross?
Um, actually, I did email some questions, uh, but Ms. Sarah, thank you, you did respond to those in the presentation, um, let me toggle back real quick, um. Did you touch base on the ADA button relocation, why is that happening now, uh, was that not contemplated? When the project was initially, um, drawn up, what was the purpose of adding that to a change order?
Yes, I don't have all the details, so, afraid of making the wrong statement. I will find out with our design team and provide that information back. I'm happy to bring that to the next meeting or send via email. Um, i- indeed, this changes a change from whatever was in our design plans to, to what we eventually installed. And sometimes we do that when we identify that we need either a bigger unit, or that the original location has some conflict with other uses that were planned, or that were not fully accounted for at the time the design was done. But in order to provide the most accurate response for each of this, um, I would appreciate having the opportunity to bring that information back.
Sounds good, I'm good with an email.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, the single comment or question I have is, uh, the line item for E V charger. Did we, uh, pursue any grants or anything, I know, uh, Did we uh pursue any grants or anything? I know uh Energy Northwest and a couple of their uh partners, if you will. Have been um funded fairly well for EV chargers throughout uh the central and eastern portion of state. Probably a little late now, but I didn't, did we look at that at all?
I don't believe that specific to this project, there was an application related to EV chargers.
Okay, uh, just one thing maybe to keep is we maybe need to implement these with new builds. Um, there may be local money relatively, uh, that can come back into our pocket. So, appreciate that. With that, do we have any public comments on this issue? Uh, is it about this issue? Alrighty. Go for it. You can turn on the mic.
Mary Mahoney, Pasco resident, uh, to Pasco via RCW four two point five six. If you could provide a pie chart regarding the CIP budget or any Pasco budget. CIP budget being over half a billion dollars. That provides for an onsite low-cost bay neuter clinic at Tri-City Animal Control. And if you could provide photos, plans and costs for an attached outdoor dog run at Tri-City Animal Control. In compliance with the Animal Welfare Act enforced by the USDA, EPA, Department of Justice. And federal case law. See and provide videos. Uh, the video from the Pasco City Attorney Lee Kerr's comments. At the city, Pasco City Council on four one nineteen. Provide information distributed by Pasco and Tri-City Animal Control. That informs the public that Tri-City Animal Control is a research provider for WSU. As well as for harvesting animal parts for other facilities. Uh, provide the funds Pasco and Tri-City Animal Control receives from WSU for providing dogs and cats for. Um, WSU research. Provide the number of dogs and cats sent to WSU for research. By current Tri-City Animal Control Director Ben Zigan. Also provide euthanasia numbers, adoptions, bay neutrals within the same timeframe. I'd like to add regarding Belle's journey. Belle was seized without due process as is set forth by Pasco City Attorney Lee Kerr. See the same video and provide it from four one nineteen. WSU receives.
Thank you, Ms. Mahoney.
Tens of thousands of mostly dogs and cats for research and um.
Thank you for your comment.
My comments are for the record and to put Pasco on notice. And all these do pertain to the um money made and um.
Thank you.
The budget.
Do we have any additional public comment on this issue? Going twice, three times. We'll move on for item J, which is resolution bit award for Martin Luther King Junior. Community Center remodel and expansion phase one construction project. Sticking with you, Ms. Sarah.
Good evening again. We are bringing to you the proposed bit award for the first phase. Of Martin Luther King Junior Community Center renovation and expansion. Next slide please. Just uh to remind, we've seen this slide before. Uh, this is the facing plan for the proposed improvements. The bed uh that we're proposing for award to, tonight. Um, it's phase one shown in orange in your screen. Next slide please. And some of the layouts and concept for, it includes not only uh indoor area. But also an outdoor enclosed uh playground. Next slide please. And this is the layout of the in, interior floor, floor pan, which would be subject to the first phase uh remodel. Next slide please. And again, some more concepts. Next slide. More pictures. Next slide. Next slide. Thank you. So here we get to the uh funding secured for this project. And you've seen this slide before, but it's good to just see where we are in the process. So, current funding for the project is six point four eight million dollars. Total spent to date is four hundred thousand dollars and that involves permitting, design and staff time. Working on outreach and uh design efforts. And then the steps for this phase, we uh advertised, we completed design, we advertised for bid, we opened bids. And uh tonight, we are presenting to you a bit award, which we hope will be in your agenda next Monday in December. As it was shown in the previous uh presentation, which we're showing you again tonight. Next slide please. So, we open bids, we receive um six bids. And the lowest bidder was Booth and Sons Construction. Uh, there was a minor irregularity with their bid, which was waived. And we did receive a um protest from the second bidder. And that bid protest was uh responded to and it was found to not be valid. Therefore, we propose to you our intro lowest responsible bidder, Booth and Sons Construction. Again, engineer's estimate was three point two million dollars, bit pretty competitive. As you can see. The lowest bidder as proposed for award is two point seven six million. And that allows us to spend the uh ARPA dollars, which need to be contracted by the end of the year. So this amount is uh sufficient. This bit award is sufficient to contract the ARPA dollars and uh not have those be in jeopardy of being lost. Next slide please. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just wanted to say, yes, it's good to see the progress on this. Thank you for your work on this. Great to see it going. I know, um, you know, this will be received positive within the community and just look forward to it. And thanks for making the year the end, uh, or the year-end deadline for those funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim, Mr. Brown.
Wha- what was the regularity that was waived? If, if you could speak to that?
Yes, there was a form that stated that eh if there was no dollar amount for a certain bid item. It should say NA or not applicable. But the form itself said, please complete this area, this field. With a valid dollar amount. So the dollar amount there was entered was zero, which is consistent with what the form said. But the instructions said NA. And so when we look at that and we evaluate it and of course. Uh, our attorney will correct me if I'm saying this wrong. We evaluate whether that irregularity gave any advantage to the bidder. And in this case, it was found that did not provide any advantage to the bidder. It was simply um a, a minor irregularity. Which we're allowed to waive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Baras, do you have anything?
No, I'm just glad to see the progress of the, the, the design. It looks beautiful and thank you for, for making it happen.
Thank you. I will echo the sentiments. I know we got some folks that are really chomping at the bit. And we also were, you know, sweating there on the ARPA funds. Um, appreciate you coming in and getting that done within the proper timing. Um, do we have any public comments on this issue? Going once, going twice, third time? Uh, with that, we'll move on to item K, which is resolution I eighty-two Broadmore Boulevard interchange project. Uh, we just slid through that. I understand, ma'am. I just called for it three times.
Can I make a comment?
Um, I'd rather not go back. Um, you wanna keep it short? About the MLK? Okay. I'll give you a, let's keep it to a minute.
Mary Mahoney, Pasco resident, Pasco via four two, RCW four two point five six. Please provide a pie chart with the CIP budget or any Pasco budget, showing the amount of tax dollars paid for. Paying for the MLK Junior Center, Boys and Girls Club, a low barrier homeless shelter for people. And the Pasco Aquatic Center. Include the number of ten thousand dollar uh payments. And travel expenses paid out to ex-Pasco Mayor Matt Watkins, uh, representing Pasco. Um, Pasco's search for an aquatic wow factor. Um, Keeper News also approximates that the installments are forty million dollars per installment. How many installments are there for the uh aquatic center? Also, could you provide funds set aside for free bus rides for the Eastside Pasco kids so they can use the aquatic center? And then three, also see Ickmeyer Roundy Annexation and LID imposition. Um, five twenty-three, twenty-two regarding um Pasco's budget, um, referred to as cartoon math. Um, the um procedures for notice and basically theft with the LID. And also I wanted to say that the floodplain, American bald eagles are back. And all that implies with um permits. That's from the Department of Fish and Wildlife and permits for. From the US Army Corps of Engineers for the notice. Uh, it, um, this is to notify Pasco. Um, to put Pasco on notice and um my comments are for the record.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item K, uh, resolution I eighty-two Broadmore Boulevard interchange project. Change order number nine. Approval back to you, Ms. Sarah.
Good evening again. We are bringing to you a change order. This is change order number nine. For I one eighty-two Broadmore interchange improvements. And um, as you may have seen, the roundabout is open. And we are uh very close to completion. The project should be completed by the end of the year. This change order relates to a gravel embankment that is required as part of the safety requirements. That DOT has when building infrastructure within their right of way, specifically related to um. The, the bridge, uh, the connection of a ramp with the existing bridge. This was an item that was inadvertently omitted from the specifications and plans, yet it could have been required. Uh, regardless, right? It was required at, in the design. It was mess or it was not bid for. And so now we're adding it to the project via change order to be able to pay the contractor for the work that they are required to do. And for us to have a compliant project. So ultimately, this change order is a just under forty-three thousand dollar. Uh, change order in this project. It adds to the existing change orders and the overall, you know, total contract. If this change order is approved, it's seven point three seven four million dollars. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. The only question I, I have in regards to the change order is, it said, you said it was omitted and then brought back? Is that essentially what happened?
Right, it was uh inadvertently omitted from the plans, yet it was uh identified as needed. Therefore, we are reincorporating into the contract via this change order.
And it was omitted by the state?
It was omitted by our design.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Baras, do you have anything?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no further lights, um, we will move on to item L, which is. Resolution West Pasco Water Treatment Plant Phases Three and Four Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. Additional loan acceptance. Sticking you still, sticking with you still, Ms. Sarah.
Good evening. This is my last item tonight. So sorry, you're tired of hearing me talk. Um, we are bringing to you, this is an additional award from Department of Health. A few weeks back, if you remember, we brought a twelve million dollar low interest loan from DOH for uh West Pasco Water Treatment Plant. The maximum award per uh jurisdiction per year is twelve million dollars. But in this case, there were some unallocated dollars that DOH had available and our project was uh in need of that additional funding. So we were able to secure the additional one point one seven million dollars to help fully fund our project. So this will look like a separate loan agreement, same terms, same conditions as the one for the twelve million dollars. Applied to the same project and uh making effectively a thirteen million dollar loan from DOH for that project. So, next slide please. Um, I can, I can go through this real quick. It's a twenty-year loan, uh, two point uh two five percent interest. Uh, half of this principal will be forgivable, just under half is forty-eight and a half, uh, will be forgivable. Which means that we don't need to repay it once we have um completed our construction. We do pay interest for that money as we are doing the construction. But once we close our loan and we're just paying, the, the repayment schedule eliminates that, in that uh principal. And then um, of course, this will help us fund the totality of the project. So construction, construction management and any other services or permitting that we need throughout uh the construction of the project. And this is the West Pasco Phases Three and Four for West Pasco Expansion to the eighteen million gallons per day capacity. And with that, I think I've covered all the slides. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, only question I had is, does our loan. Um, consider any cost overruns that may happen with tech change orders?
Yes, typically there is a contingency amount in our application that is minimum of ten percent. Uh, that is for DOH specifically. Other agencies like Ecology limit that to five percent. Um, and so that is accounted in that loan. Also, in the past, we have found that when we run into situations where our funding strategy changes. And we need additional funds, uh, DOH has been very willing to discuss with us what they can do to help us. Especially if they have additional unallocated funds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Baras, you have anything?
Thank you. No comments.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this one? Going once, going twice, going three times? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to item M, as in Mary. This is resolution Amtrak National Railroad Passenger Corporation Intermodal Transportation Facility Lease Agreement. Sliding on to an unfamiliar Mr. Rice for the evening.
Unless Murray wants to wrap us up, you know? All right, very good. Thank you. Uh, yes, this evening, uh, I have a resolution before you to a uh, for a new lease for uh the uh Amtrak. Or the National Railroad Passenger Corporation for leasing space over at the Intermodal uh station in order to uh allow passenger train service. Um, they originally had a lease uh with uh several, five-year lease with a couple of five-year extension options. Both of those have been completed, so therefore they're requesting to renew into a new lease. Um, this lease would be a single ten-year lease. Um, uh, which, excuse me, um, which we evaluated with our real estate representative. To ensure that the annual three percent increase would cover all the uh current costs and it will. So essentially, we're asking for approval of this ten-year lease uh for a total amount of four hundred and ten thousand dollars, hu- a hundred fifty-six dollars. Um, with that, um, any questions?
Uh, seeing none, Ms. Baras, do you have anything?
Nope, no questions from me.
All right, well, looks like we're good to go on that one.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have any public comments on this one? Going once, going twice, third time? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to item N, that is our Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommendations for twenty twenty-five. And Ms. Pashon, you're gonna give that to us.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, I'm here to present the recommendations of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, or LTAC. For the allocation of lodging tax revenues for the two thousand and twenty-five year. State law authorizes cities to collect base lodging tax of four percent and requires the establishment of an LTAC. This committee plays a vital role in reviewing proposed uses of lodging tax funds and making annual recommendations to council. For twenty twenty-five's allocation, uh, LTAC convened on October fifteenth to evaluate eighteen proposals received. The proposals requested totaled over one point one million dollars, while the projected revenue for the year is estimated for one million dollars. Staff developed the following prioritization measures to develop recommendations for LTAC consideration. And that included long-term contractual commitments. Uh, we're given the top priorities. So these include the Hapo Center subsidy, um, with the ILA extended through the end of this year. And um, the master planning efforts going on. We wanted to ensure that we still have that funding there in case. And um, to um, provide that. Uh, GISA Improvement Bond Debt. There were improvements done, uh, two million dollars of improvements done in twenty nineteen. So we are uh utilizing lodging tax funds for that as well. Um, as, as well as the Visit Tri-Cities um contract, which we have with them to um. Do, uh, develop and implement marketing and promotional plans. So this is something that each of the cities does. Um, so they have an allocation uh set aside every year, um, and we contract with them for those services. Uh, additionally, special event applications were reduced proportionally, marketing applications. Uh, additionally, special event applications were reduced proportionally. Marketing applications uh, were also reduced proportionally. Uh, after reviewing the proposals in detail, the LTAC made its funding recommendations. Um, in cases where funding requests uh, will exceed available revenue, so um. Well, yep, they're on the screen, sorry. Um, so um, any overages would be covered by uh, lodging tax reserves. So um, the million dollars is a conservative estimate that we use. Um, and the recommendations coming to council tonight is actually for um, one million and five thousand dollars. Um, and that was discussed uh, amongst LTAC. So any funds that we need to, um, if we have to dip into the five thousand dollars, that would be where those funds come from. Um, I do want to note that we've seen steady growth in the participation in LTAC over the recent years. Uh, reflecting our enhanced communication efforts for the program. So in twenty twenty-two, we had received six applications. In twenty twenty-three, we received twelve applications. Twenty twenty-four, we received thirteen, and then this year, we received eighteen applications. So we're working hard to get that out to um, the nonprofits and the different groups that hold events. Um, and bring tourism to our area. Um, in addition, uh, to the recommendations, I realized that uh, something did not make it into the agenda report. And that was the extension of the twenty twenty-four award of twenty-five thousand dollars for the downtown mural program. So that program, um, we've seen great interest in. Um, and the proposal and recommendation from LTAC was to extend that to allow until the end of twenty twenty-five. Um, so we do have one mural completed as well as one in progress. Um, and we have one other that is pending, so we have about ten thousand to fifteen thousand dollars left in that. Um, award itself, but we would like to uh, recommend that extend so that the Arts Commission can review. Uh, take feedback and then um, re um, do the next phase and launch the next phase in early twenty twenty-five. Um, so next steps, per RCW, the city council must either accept the LTAC recommendations. Or determine that the recommendations are not acceptable and remand them back to the committee for reconsideration. Uh, staff believes the LTAC recommendations are sound and consistent. And we recommend that council approve the applica- or the allocations uh, of the recommendations uh, presented. For next week's meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Pashon. Mr. Harpster.
Thank you. Uh, can you, Ms. Pashon, can you explain the distribution of these, how of, well, can you explain how these funds are distributed? I know we talked briefly about it, but I I just don't understand well enough to re-explain it.
Of course. Um, so it will depend. I'll take something from Ms. Sarah. Um, it it depends on which uh, piece it is. So if it is a contractual, um, it will, it's, we are send an invoice from Visit Tri-Cities and we pay that invoice. Um, when it comes to the Hapo Center, we would um, receive an invoice from Franklin County. Um, and for GISA Stadium, it's a, we pay the the bond debt. When it comes to some of the others, um, so if you're thinking uh, like uh, Time Magic or Pasco Chamber. It would have to be a reimbursement base. So their activity happens, they provide us the information. Um, and then we enter into an agreement with them um, through lodging tax. That they will provide that information and provide us receipts. Um, so it just depends on which, which event it is.
Um, another question, the. Oh, there's the uh, COP Marketing City of Pasco Marketing. Can you explain what that is?
Absolutely. So that's City of Pasco Marketing. Um, and so that uh, is things where um, we've, we've done some branding efforts. And one of those is going to be um, kind of a, a local badge. So you see um, uh, and I don't remember the tagline off the top of my head right now. That's why I have my comms team, they're great. Um, but it's really a, a place marker for us. So um, whether that's a window cling in a downtown business. Um, so we're looking at those kind of efforts to really help build what Pasco is. Um, and when people come here, they know, you know, it, whether it's a hat or a shirt, um, that's one of the efforts. Uh, one of the other efforts is when we go to different events, so um. Or uh, one of the other uh, pieces that is coming out of lodging tax this year is actually an arts map. So we're um, creating an arts map and that was one of the uses for that marketing dollars this year.
Okay. Um, last question for some comments, the uh. Has the city worked with Time Magic before? I've never, I've heard of most of these events and organizations, but I've never heard of Time Magic.
Time Magic um, has done some work for us. So for the State of the Cities um, video from last week. Um, some of that footage was actually from Time Magi- Magic. So they focus more on our downtown efforts this year. Um, they would focus on our sporting events, so Sports Complex, uh, Softball Complex and our Soccer in GISA. Um, so they do the work, then we actually contract with, we have a contract that we get that uh, work that they do as well. So we can use it for our own purposes.
Okay, thanks. Um. And then just a few comments, the uh, for council. So I looked up Swim the Snake and it seemed like an extremely small event. And so my, my uh, preference would be that we remove that one, allocate those funds somewhere else. Um, the Charo Event, I'm not a fan of at all. I'm definitely opposed to any funds going to that. The, would, I highly recommend everybody look up Charo Dancing Horses and the, the practice of training horses to do that is abusive in nature. Um, pretty severely, and it's not something I'd want the City of Pasco to be participating in. Um, and then um. So, so all I'd say, I think some further discussion between councils warranted for where we want these funds to go. I'd also like to know kind of stipulations for um, where these funds could go. So um, you know, we can't just allocate these funds to, I don't know, Greg's department store randomly. And so exactly what that, what they need to be providing us to be able to receive those funds, that'd be helpful. Um, and then i- in talking with Mr. Lincoln about this, the, we, we've got a lot of flexibility on what we can do with these funds. There's no timeline to try to get it done before the end of the year. And so it maybe between now and, and December ninth workshop meeting, all of us kind of think about maybe some other places we'd like to see these funds go towards. And discuss again on the ninth, and uh, if nobody has any other opinions, then I guess we stick with what's presented. But um, we'd just like to have some more discussion on um, one, where we could allocate funds and the two other places.
With, with lodging tax, it does require an application period. So we've passed the application period. Um, and so this is an annual um, eh, process we go through. So you would be limited to the applications we've received. Um, so um, one of the areas that um, we could look at, especially a strategy going forward. Is, you know, if there are specific projects, staff tries to um, not, and I don't want to say hog. But we, we try to be um, diligent about what we're requesting so that there is the available funds for um, nonprofits. And other community events happening. Um, and so that's where you see the soccer complex is listed this year for us. Um, because we took that over um, from TCYSA. Um, whereas in twenty twenty-four, we put in an application for the city for the softball complex to improve that. So we do try to balance it. Um, and so you're limited to the eighteen applications we received. Um, I can say that um, outside of Hapo, GISA and Visit Tri-Cities. Uh, and the fund administration, um, every single one of these saw some reduction in their request.
Um, I had one more comment, I forgot. Uh, oh, the application window, is that an annual process?
It is.
Um, I'd also, I know you guys both have, be curious to hear from uh, Councilman Prowl and Councilman Blaisdell, since they've got more experience with uh, this stuff, so.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Prowl.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was of the same sentiment. I, I looked up Swim the Snake and I, I would just think, couple of these events, I think we should put money towards other ones. And I looked at a couple of their applications and a lot of them did request more. I would like to see more money funded to the NWA basketball um, event, the CBC volleyball event, those sporting events bring people into the community. So whatever ways we can help market those, I think we should do that. Um, yeah, I would be okay with not giving any money to the Charo Event, Swim the Snake Event. I, I would think, I can't remember off the top of my head how much Juneteenth asked for, but I would think Juneteenth should probably get a little bit more funds. Um, for that, for that event. And even Water Follies, uh, Water Follies has been in jeopardy of not even happening some years. Because of lack of funds and getting people there. Um, yeah, no, I'd be in favor of kind of workshopping this and figuring out which ones we would like to fund. Um, if there's no dead line, um, that's, that's of urgency. I think we should do that. Thank you.
And I'll, and I, let me add, um, so that you'll have two options. You'll either accept them or send them back. Um, and so workshopping, I understand, um, but it would go back to the Lodging Tax commit- Committee. Um, and then they would have to, we would then bring back recommendations to you guys.
Yeah, that'd be great. Um, I think that, that would be my vote.
Okay, uh, Ms. Blaisdell, then back to you, Ms. Sarah.
Okay, I think um, I guess a couple of the important parts to this is, so everyone understands. Who's made up of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee? How they come up with the um, determination of what money is allocated to what? Because when I see the list of who all the money is allocated, that's just going right back into. Um, money that's going back into our hotels, back into the restaurants, back into the grocery stores, gas stations. Um, this is attracting more people to our area. Maybe Swim the Snake isn't as big as it could be, but how many swimmers are gonna swim the snake? They're probably going to travel from outside the area and stay um, closer to. Where the event is, so um, I think the bigger picture. Where we can pick apart every single one of those special events or where this money is going. What really matters is how much money is actually going back into uh, people spending money in Pasco. So that's where, and. I think all of those events will put heads in beds and more money spent.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Harpster. Do you have a quick follow-up?
Actually, real quick, can she answer, Angela, can you answer the question about who's the Tax Advisory Committee made up of?
Absolutely. So you have two um, representatives that are the, uh, from who collect the um, the fees. So hotel individuals, and then you have two users and then are elected, so our mayor. Um, so everyone on that committee is a part of tourism and that, the entire process. So they do go through this and look at it from that perspective. Um, that's where, when new events come forward to lodging tax, they've long done a strategy of, you may ask for this. But we're gonna give you less to see how you do, how we can work with you. Um, and so that's where you do see some fluctuation. Um, I would say Hector Cruz is on the Visit Tri- or he's on LTAC and he is very helpful in providing us, you know. The context from the conventions and um, you know, CBC and all of those that are bringing in individuals to stay in our hotels.
Thank you.
Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, just quickly, the uh, uh, to Ms. Blaisdell's point, the Swim the Snake, I looked up that event, looked at the pictures. I would, I would guess there was maybe twelve pe- twelve swimmers. And so that was why I brought up removing that one, is if the goal is put heads in beds, then um. That, that, I don't think that event does that. Um, the, so then, I think what we should do then is, Ms. Pashon, I mean, Craig, since we need to remand it back to LTAC. Or approve it, can we remand it back to them with our preference or, or requirement, opinions, whatever, and?
I will say, I've been doing LTAC for many, many years and I have never had that happen, so um, I might need Mr. Ferguson.
Sure, yeah, so this is a, a little squishy area of all, there's not uh, uh, clearly, the, the statute is a little odd. And there's a formal uh, Attorney General opinion from two thousand sixteen, but essentially, uh, per the practice tip uh, on MRC's webpage. Dealing with these LTACs, their recommendation is that uh, for the first kind of step would be the legislative body is not required to fund the full list. Of recommended recipients and you can choose to make awards to only some or none of the recommended recipients. But you cannot, a legislative body may not award funds to any recipient that is not recommended by LTAC. So that's kind of as a threshold, like if you like this list, but you don't want some of them, but you do want others, uh, then you could do that. Uh, but you can't add somebody to this list. The second part of that is, is where the informal opinion comes in from the AG, uh, which says. That based on the statute, uh, the legislative body may award amounts different to the LTAC's recommended amounts. But only after satisfying the procedural requirement uh, of our statute, uh, sixty-seven, twenty-eight, eighteen, seventeen. Uh, this requires the municipality to submit its proposed changes to the LTAC to review and comment at least forty-five days. Before final action is taken. So it sounds like, uh, based on that second part, if the goal was to reallocate. Uh, some of these, add some, if the, if the only goal is to add or subtract some, then it sounds like you're there, you could do that. Uh, uh, you couldn't add people who aren't on here. I mean, you could, you could not fully fund some folks if you didn't want to. But if you're gonna want to mess with the numbers, it sounds like that's when the forty-five day uh, requirement kicks in and other folks probably have more experience with that. But uh, it sounds like that's, uh, that would really take some, doing some homework maybe at the next workshop. And, and then, then at that point, you could send it back to them and that starts that forty-five day clock and, and they can come back with it.
Perfect. That, that's exactly what I was looking for. Um, with that being said, then I would agree with Mr. Prowl is that the Swim the Snake funding and, and Charo Event. It, it, I mean, it's only six grand, but I think that is better spent on the CBC events, volleyball and basketball and. Um, I could almost, I'm not gonna guarantee, but I could almost guarantee that uh, those events are bringing or putting heads in beds. The uh, uh, playoffs are held here and even if uh, CBC makes it, and most of the players on their basketball roster, at least last season, are not from Tri-Cities. From all over the country. And so those are events, I think we're definitely bringing people in. And so um, exactly what Mr. Ferguson said, I'd agree with that we, between now and, and the ninth, you know, think about it, whatever you need to do. And then uh, make a formal uh. I've lost my train of thoughts, sir. Yeah, yeah, back to LTAC, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Braws, you have anything?
Yeah, oh, yes, actually I do. Thank you. Um, so I see on the list, COPA is uh, still on there for fifteen thousand dollars. Um, I'd like to remind um, staff that we had said. Uh, we were not going to uh, fund COPA. There's several issues going on there for why I'm bringing this up. And um, thank you, Mr. Ferguson, for the explanation. In that, in that case, with that explanation, can we move around the funds to fund um, Juneteenth? Uh, some more? That's, that's a cultural event that needs more support from the city. Um, being that those are residents within the city versus COPA. It's not that I'm against the arts, it's against the, the body. And the way that they are currently running the group and in hopes to avoid another similar DPDA situation is the reason why I'm bringing this up. Um, if, there's other, there's, there's, this list is a good extensive list. That some of these events could uh, benefit from, from a revisit of the funding, of the support. The Charo Event, uh, although a cultural, specific event. Um, I, I don't see a benefit to, to it receiving funding. Because they do perform within the Cinco de Mayo, sometimes within the fiery foods festivals. So there are other events that are funded. Uh, where they are part of. Um, so I, you know, I, yeah, I would reallocate those funds to something else. Um. That, that would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Ms. Braws. Uh, Mr. Prowl, keep it tight, please.
Yeah, well, I don't want to labor this, but yeah, no, I, I would be in favor of keeping COPA. Uh, that's what I think a lot of us agreed on. To, this was the type of uh, the funds that we were gonna do for, so, or we, that we were gonna use. So I'd be in favor of keeping that fifteen K uh, for COPA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milner.
Uh, also uh, echo uh, Prowl's, Councilman Prowl's is a thing on COPA. I have not seen any. Uh, misbehaving by any of the board members. Um, to me, it's all legit. But uh, again, if I want to see emails, please send them to me uh, with your concerns. But uh, again, I think we should put COPA back on there. Just keep it on there. Seems to be money well spent.
And we'll circle once more back to Mr. Harpster and Ms. Blaisdell, and I'd like to close this out real quick.
I just wanted to quickly add, uh, for Ms. Braws, that that discussion that we had on COPA last week was regarding the general fund. This is for a different funding source.
Thank you, uh, you.
And just for procedural uh, step, it sounds like uh, the municipality uh, or the, the legislative body would have to submit its proposed changes to the LTAC. For review and comment at least forty-five days prior to final action. So that, to me, interpreting that, and I can do a deeper dive into the statute. But it sounds like to me, based on that, uh, the, this council would need to really figure out, do its homework and figure out what they want those amounts to be. And then vote, and then once. And then once it's, uh, approved, then it would go back to them. So, uh, I think we're, excuse me, I think we're kinda running out of some time here, uh, other than setting a potentially setting a special meeting on the ninth, uh, to actually make that vote, uh, assuming that, uh, folks, uh, that uh, the ninth is the last meeting there. I, I don't know if that's the case, but if that is the case, uh, that's a workshop and so normally we wouldn't be taking action. So we'd need to figure out some other alternative if you wanted to do that prior to any potential break.
I, I suspect we could maybe, uh, circulate some thoughts and hopefully come back for the second for approval. Uh, the forty-five days is post, right? We'll, we'll have the second as a regular meeting, the ninth as a workshop with any necessary special meeting if any, right?
A- actually, we, we have some recommendations. I was gonna wait for miscellaneous, but we were recommending a special meeting on the ninth to go through some, some housekeeping items, uh, for lack of a better term, but, um, cat's out of the bag now.
All righty, exciting times. Um, as we close this down, before we get to public comment on it, um, I, I will note that we had some pretty robust discussion on these issues. Um, as, as you can tell, when you look at the applications, I don't think there's a single one that's fully funded. Quite frankly, I just wanted to say, let's waive some of these issues and just put it all in the soccer complex so the city could dwindle down its budget, but uh, obviously that wasn't the right decision. Um, there's, you know, what should be done for the city and what needs to be done. Um, we had some of these internal conversations on LTAC as to some of these events that are newer, that we weren't certain about. Um, but the bottom line was we, we believe that this was a way to, uh, measurably use these funds to give them the opportunity for each one of these events to succeed. That said, if the general body council wants to modify this, so be it. Um, you know, I, I'm not gonna lie, I'm not gonna say that I'm gonna take the comments back and take it to heart. If we come back and think this is where we need to go, ship back the recommendation, realizing, realizing that, you know, I'm one of seven who has to approve it on the backend. So I, I realize that. But just, uh, it did take some wrestling, I'll say that. Um, unfortunately, we didn't fund any wrestling, but it wasn't requested. Uh, so with that, do we have any public comments on this? Mr. Rambo.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, Council and Staff. Thanks. I'm glad I got to squeeze something in here at the end of the meeting. Um, I wanna speak on a couple of things as the recipient of the last year's LTAC funding for the, uh, the mural program. I wanna say thank you very much. I've talked about that here before, but you can go downtown and you can see uh, what's going on and you can see people regularly stopping, taking pictures, getting excited and then going into the local restaurants. I think that that's, that having the opportunity to roll that forward to next year uh, is, is great. Um, my neighbors have already been asking about how to get that done. So I will, if as soon as I know anything, I will make sure to let them know so they can get in a little bit quicker and not have to be down to the wire like, uh, we were here this, at the end of this year. Um, I wanted to touch base on the, the Copa Symphony Event. So I believe that this is just for the Symphony Event and it's paid for by the, the tat, the lodging tax and I'm, I'm not a part of Copa. I don't directly benefit from it, other than being a downtown Pasco person and talking to my neighbors who talk, who say that it is a big deal. Uh, seeing new, new folks from out of town coming in to check out this event, uh, i- is a big deal. The restaurants have noticed a big difference. Uh, my local clothing vendors, my neighbors notice an uptick during these events as well. So I, I think that that's a, a really important thing to keep. So I really, I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, do we have any additional public comment going once, twice, third time? With that, we will move on to item number six, miscellaneous discussion. Mr. Lincoln, any, uh, any other curveballs coming at us?
Uh, briefly, just a reminder that City Hall is gonna close at two PM on Wednesday for the Thanksgiving break. Uh, and then, um, for council discussion, the, the plan was to have meetings on twelve-two and twelve-nine and to cancel the other meetings, but wanted to see what council's appetite was for that. So, but there's feedback for staff if we're gonna cancel a few meetings.
Um, I mean, I'm, I'm open to going twelve-two and twelve-nine, uh, if we find that we really need to push it. Twelve-sixteen, uh, I would, I, I will not be here. Um, I don't know if I'm traveling, but I won't be here on the thirtieth or the twenty-third. So whether I'm five miles away or two thousand miles away, I won't be here on those two. So pre, predetermined absences, Mr. Harps there.
Oh, I was just gonna add the, uh, I've mentioned this somebody today, but the, uh, the city, Kennewick City originally cancelled a number of meetings throughout the year and I think we've only canceled two this entire year. We've also had, I think, half a dozen meetings go till almost eleven. Couple is my fault. But, uh, with that being said, I think we do the second and the ninth and close out the year. That's my thought.
Mr. Peralis.
I'll concur with that.
Mr. Milne.
I'm good with that as well.
Uh, Ms. Bras, you got any, anything in that, on that?
I agree.
Okay. Anything else? All right, uh, up for us, Mr. Harps there.
Yeah, just, just one random thing for the record, anybody watching at home. Director Rice, can you clarify how many dogs and cats we've sent to WSU for research? Just for those watching who may, uh, I'm not trying to be funny, but just for those watching who may think that we have.
I can speak on, since the city has assumed operations, we have sent them to WSU for research.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Grim.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I can just have a second just for, for a thought, um, no, it, it's Thanksgiving week. And I just wanted to say briefly how thankful I am to serve with you guys, how thankful I am for staff over here and, um, you know, thankful to be able to raise my kids in the city of Pasco and if I know it's a little late, if you'd allowed me, I'd love to read two sentences from George Washington real quick. Um, this was the very first, um, Thanksgiving proclamation. He said, whereas it is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey his will, to be grateful for his benefits and humbly to implore his protection and favor. And whereas both houses of Congress have by their joint committee requested me to recommend to the people of the United States a day of public Thanksgiving and prayer to be observed by acknowledging with grateful hearts the many signal favors of Almighty God, especially by affording them an opportunity peaceably to establish a form of government for their safety and happiness. And I'm really thankful for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Grim. Ms. Blaze though.
I just wanna say how thankful and appreciative I'm, I am of Route sixty-eight and Court Roundabout. I have lived on sixty-eight for the last forever. And the new roundabout is so much better than what it was. So kudos, I love it. And if you haven't gone down there, take a stroll down Court Street to hit up sixty-eight and Court.
Thank you. Mr. Milne.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I'm thankful that Thanksgiving is coming up, um, spend time with family, but I just wanna make a, a note that there are some of us that, uh, don't get to see their kids. I got the two daughters in the military and I will not see them. Um, so it's a little hard, but, uh, just wanna say thank you to all our military out there that are protecting the nation, uh, don't get to come home for Thanksgiving or in this case also for Christmas. So, uh, just putting that out there and, but I'm thankful to, to be here in the great state of Washington and the city of Pasco.
Thank you. Ms. Bras, you got anything?
Yep, since we're all giving thanks, thank you to staff, especially to staff. Thank you to public service. Thank you to all our first responders. Um, this year I do get to spend, uh, Thanksgiving with both my boys. Um, so, Mr. Milne, I feel your, I feel your pain, but I will be having my son home with me. Um, so thank you, everyone that's watching for your time and, um, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I too am, I'm grateful this time of year. Um, you know, it's, it's been certainly my privilege to serve as the mayor this past year and, um, several years on council. It's been a great opportunity to be more um, engaged in the community and I'm just grateful for the support, those who, who offer it, uh, certainly for my family. And with that, we'll move on to item seven, which is executive session. We do have need for that, just a mere thirty minutes. Um, to consider site selection, uh, or acquisition of real estate purchase or lease, if likelihood, the disclosure would increase price, uh, under RCW revised code of Washington, forty-two point three zero point one one zero subsection one, subsection B. And to discuss with legal counsel about current or potential litigation under RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero subsection one, Roman numeral one. Uh, it is nine forty. I'm gonna ask for, uh, four and a half, five minute break, uh, you know, just take a pit stop till nine forty-five, thirty minutes. So hopefully we'll be back at ten fifteen to close out executive session. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lieutenant Thomas Groom with the Pasco Police Department. And I'm here today to discuss how we as a department work to not only be in our community, but to be a part of our community. Our philosophy is grounded in community oriented policing. We believe that the best form of security arises not just from simply patrolling the streets, but from building bridges with our residents. Through community engagement, we continuously strive to forge partnerships that lead to a safer and better quality of life in Pasco. Beginning with our primary service, patrol, we try to demonstrate this philosophy. Rather than our officers simply responding to calls for service, handling the call and moving on to the next task, we encourage our officers to identify the underlying issues and work with the community to address the issues with the hope of preventing future incidents. Our patrol officers contact a significant amount of our community every day and their interactions are paramount in building relationships. Our area resource officers are another branch of this vision. By assigning officers to specific areas of the city annually, we ensure they have the opportunity to deeply understand the needs and concerns of their specific zones. This familiarity doesn't just foster trust, but creates a two-way dialogue where both officers and citizens can share and act on community insights. Similarly engaged are our school resource officers. They play a critical role in ensuring the safety and wellbeing of our younger generation. By being present in our schools, they not only act as protectors, but as mentors, fostering positive relationships between students and law enforcement. We also boost our community engagement initiatives through more entertaining means, like our community engagement canine goose. You may also see officers at parks and events pushing around a pletah cart, laden with frozen treats. Both goose and our pletas are intended to build friendly connections in the community by creating interactions between the community and our police outside of a typical enforcement contact. Our mission at the Pasco Police Department isn't solely about policing. It's about being a part of the community we're in. To learn more about our community engagement activities or to get involved, don't hesitate to contact us at five zero nine, five four five, three four two one, or visit us at the website, pascopeleague.com. For the Pasco Pulse, this is Lieutenant Thomas Groom. Thanks for watching.
Welcome to the Pasco Specialty Kitchen in downtown Pasco, the heart of culinary innovation in our community. Whether you're a seasoned chef or just starting out, our fully equipped certified commercial kitchen is here to help bring your culinary dreams to life. At PSK, we offer a unique opportunity for food entrepreneurs to utilize or pass through windows, a direct way to connect your delicious creations with the community. Getting started at PSK is simple. The process begins with reaching out to our team, who will guide you every step of the way. From the initial application to getting your business up and running in our kitchen. Our application process typically takes thirty to forty-five days, allowing us to ensure all permits and licenses are in order. Planning ahead is key to make the most of your time in our kitchen. Our clients come from all walks of life, including bakers, caterers and mobile food vendors. They all share one goal, to create something special in a space designed for success. To become a PSK client, you'll need a valid business license, government issued ID, business liability insurance and contact information. After onboarding, you'll also need a City of Pasco business endorsement, food handlers cards and a food vendor permit. With a one hundred and seventy-five dollar onboarding fee, you'll be ready to turn your culinary vision into reality in a space that meets all health and safety regulations. At Pasco Specialty Kitchen, we're more than just a kitchen. We're a community of passionate creators. We provide the tools, space and support to help your business thrive. Ready to take the next step? Contact us today and let's get cooking together at the Pasco Specialty Kitchen.
Curious about where your property tax goes? Our property taxes support all kinds of basic public services like schools, ports, hospitals, social services, public safety and facilities that you use on a daily basis. And yet, when we live in a city, only a small share of the property tax actually goes to the city. It pays for things like police officers, firefighters, streets, sidewalks, parks and a vibrant main street. Each of us use many of these services every day and others, well, we're happy when they're around in times of need. Businesses and visitors may want quality services, city property tax only increased one percent each year. The problem is that Washington's population is growing much more than one percent. In fact, by twenty twenty-five, more than eight hundred thirty thousand people are expected to move here and most will live in cities. And then there's inflation, the price increase of specific items over time. For cities, the cost of inflation or the cost of providing services grows faster than one percent. Simply put, property tax does not keep up with rising inflation and population growth. We all wanna live in a vibrant city, so let's work together to make sure property tax keeps pace. Cable access channels are critical tools for local government. They provide important information about issues, services and programs, as well as local emergencies. They also allow you to watch your local elected officials in action. Through the provision of governmental access channels, our communities are kept informed, educated and entertained. Where else can you get information about your local government? Make sure everyone has a voice. Support your local government access channel.
Welcome to this edition of the Pasco Pulse. I'm Michael Hennow, environmental compliance coordinator for the city of Pasco. You can expect to see more trucks along Foster Wells Road in the coming weeks as they deliver millions of gallons of material to the Process Water Reuse Facility or PWRF. This facility takes processed water from food processing plants and turns it into water that can be used to irrigate agricultural fields. The PWRF can already process about one billion gallons of water from food processing plants every year. But with their goal set to open in the coming months and other processors expanding their operations, the demand is about to get much higher. That means this facility has to be expanded. The upgraded PWRF will provide a more complete treatment for the processed water before its use for irrigation. That will make it better for the environment and should make it smell better too. What does this have to do with those delivery trucks along Foster Wells Road? They're bringing in millions of gallons of material to kickstart our anaerobic digesters. We will have two digesters, each digester is thirty-four million gallons. Where microorganisms will help clean the water from food processors, those microorganisms also create renewable natural gas, which will be collected and sold to a local distributor. The next step in cleaning the processed water takes place in a greenhouse where we will use algae to remove some of the nitrogen from the water. Algae also takes out carbon dioxide out of the air, helping us breathe a little easier. Finally, the treated processed water will be stored in newly expanded holding ponds into its needed for irrigation. The upgraded facility is scheduled to be up and running by the end of this year. You can find more information about how this project was funded on the city website. For the Pasco Pulse, I'm Michael Hennow.
Welcome to the Pasco Sporting Complex, the perfect venue for softball and baseball tournaments of all sizes. With six recently upgraded fields, our complex is designed for top quality play, making it tournament ready nearly year round. Our dedicated maintenance team works tirelessly to ensure the fields are always in pristine condition. So your tournament can run smoothly from start to finish. But that's not all. The complex offers a full experience for both players and families. Enjoy our splash pad and playground, keeping everyone entertained between games. Plus, grab a bite at our convenient concession stand, perfect for refueling after an exciting game. Easily accessible for major highways, the complex features plenty of convenient parking and is just minutes away from hotels and restaurants. Ensuring your team and fans have everything they need nearby. Book your next tournament today at the Pasco Sporting Complex where great games and unforgettable moments happen.
Have you noticed things getting crowded lately? Washington's population is growing. By twenty twenty-five, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand people are expected to move to Washington State. That's the equivalent of another Richland, Vancouver, Tacoma. That's the equivalent of another Richland, Vancouver, Tacoma, Spokane, Bellingham, and Yakima combined, or 12 packed Seahawk stadiums. Two-thirds of the state's population already live in cities, because cities are where we live, learn, work, and play. State law actually encourages growth in cities, to preserve our farmlands and open spaces, and to be efficient with your tax donors. And this means that in many cities, budgets are already stretched thin, and we need to figure out how to serve our growing population. More people living and working in cities means more demand for services like parks, transportation, police, fire, water, and sewer. All these things cost money. Growth is happening. We all need to work together to plan and pay for it.
Pie Sharks began just as a love for baking. I went back to college when the pandemic hit, used my GI Bill from the Air Force to help pay me to go to school, and over the course of it, started baking for fun, and found out that I really loved it, really enjoyed it. When I started making pies, I found that little mini extra ones I made with extra dough ended up being better than the big ones. So came forward with a few individual-sized miniature pies, so you can get a custom mix of flavors. So I've been here at the Specialty Kitchen since the beginning of July, and we're now entering into our second month of operation in this space. In another year, I'd love to have a few more people onboard. I'm working on getting connections with different coffee shops and other locations around the Tri-Cities, so that we can have unique flavors at each of those locations, start distributing them to those different areas. You may even see some that you can only get at those locations. For instance, Cafe de Arte, right around the corner over here, we discussed having some things like a devilish egg pie that I made that's really good with coffee and those combinations, where you may not be able to get it here in our shop, but when you go to those specific stores, it drives us both to them and to us at the same time. One of our best flavors that we've had for a long time has been the jalapeno cream cheese with bacon. Soon as I say those words, people are like, "A jalapeno popper pie?" I'm like, "Exactly, it's 100% what it is." And I always try and swap around the flavors. I switch out one sweet and one savory every week to change things up, and whichever was the lowest performing is what gets swapped. And that jalapeno bacon cream cheese, it's never coming off the menu. It's stayed on there permanently. Get a lot of really positive review on cheesecake that we make as well. It's no bake, real creamy, and the lemon has been a big pop as well. Pie Sharks is a small, family-owned operation that is excited to grow and develop here in the Tri-Cities, and I look forward to providing delicious treats to anyone and everyone who has a hankering for pie.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ben Zieggen with the Tri-City Animal Shelter. We have some exciting news for all pet owners out there. We know how stressful it can be when a beloved pet goes missing, and we're here to help. That's why we've launched our new online lost and found pet reporting system. This system is a straightforward way for you to report if your pet has gone missing. Just visit our website, fill out a simple form, and your lost pet report will be up and running. It's quick and effective, ensuring your pet's information is shared with the right people immediately. But there's more. Our website now features an interactive map for found pets. This means if someone finds a lost pet, they can report it on our site, and it'll show up on the map. If you've lost your pet, you can check this map to see if someone has already found them. It's a great way to connect lost pets with their owners, quickly and efficiently. We're really proud of this new tool, and believe it's going to make a big difference in reuniting pets with their families. At the Tri-City's Animal Shelter, we're not just about sheltered animals. We're about keeping them safe and ensuring they're part of our community. For more details, check out our website at animalsheltertc.com, or feel free to call area code 509-545-3740. We're always here to help. Thanks for watching this edition of Pasco Pulse. This is Ben Zieggen, wishing you and your pets a safe and joyful day.
Hi, I'm Lieutenant Thomas Groom with the Pasco Police Department, and I'm here today to discuss how we as a department work to not only be in our community, but to be a part of our community. Our philosophy is grounded in community-oriented policing. We believe that the best form of security arises not just from simply patrolling the streets, but from building bridges with our residents. Through community engagement, we continuously strive to forge partnerships that lead to a safer and better quality of life in Pasco. Beginning with our primary service, patrol, we try to demonstrate this philosophy. Rather than our officers simply responding to calls for service, handling the call, and moving on to the next task, we encourage our officers to identify the underlying issues and work with the community to address the issues with the hope of preventing future incidents. Our patrol officers contact a significant amount of our community every day, and their interactions are paramount in building relationships. Our area resource officers are another branch of this vision. By assigning officers to specific areas of the city annually, we ensure they have the opportunity to deeply understand the needs and concerns of their specific zones. This familiarity doesn't just foster trust, but creates a two-way dialogue where both officers and citizens can share and act on community insights. Similarly engaged are our school resource officers. They play a critical role in ensuring the safety and well-being of our younger generation. By being present in our schools, they not only act as protectors, but as mentors, fostering positive relationships between students and law enforcement. We also boost our community engagement initiatives through more entertaining means, like our Community Engagement Canine Goose. You may also see officers at parks and events pushing around a palaeta cart laden with frozen treats. Both Goose and our palaetas are intended to build friendly connections in the community by creating interactions between the community and our police outside of a typical enforcement contact. Our mission at the Pasco Police Department isn't solely about policing. It's about being a part of the community we're in. To learn more about our community engagement activities or to get involved, don't hesitate to contact us at 509-545-3421, or visit us at the website pascopeleague.com. For the Pasco Pulse, this is Lieutenant Thomas Groom. Thanks for watching.
Welcome to the Pasco Specialty Kitchen in downtown Pasco, the heart of culinary innovation in our community. Whether you're a seasoned chef or just starting out, our fully-equipped certified commercial kitchen is here to help bring your culinary dreams to life. At PSK, we offer a unique opportunity for food entrepreneurs to utilize our pass-through windows, a direct way to connect your delicious creations with the community. Getting started at PSK is simple. The process begins with reaching out to our team, who will guide you every step of the way, from the initial application to getting your business up and running in our kitchen. Our application process typically takes 30 to 45 days, allowing us to ensure all permits and licenses are in order. Planning ahead is key to make the most of your time in our kitchen. Our clients come from all walks of life, including bakers, caterers, and mobile food vendors. They all share one goal: to create something special in a space designed for success. To become a PSK client, you'll need a valid business license, government-issued ID, business liability insurance, and contact information. After onboarding, you'll also need a City of Pasco business endorsement, food handlers' cards, and a food vendor permit. With a $175 onboarding fee, you'll be ready to turn your culinary vision into reality in a space that meets all health and safety regulations. At Pasco Specialty Kitchen, we're more than just a kitchen. We're a community of passionate creators. We provide the tools, space, and support to help your business thrive. Ready to take the next step? Contact us today, and let's get cooking together at the Pasco Specialty Kitchen.
Curious about where your property tax goes? Our property taxes support all kinds of basic public services like schools, ports, hospitals, social services, public safety, and facilities that you use on a daily basis. And yet, when we live in a city, only a small share of the property tax actually goes to the city. It pays for things like police officers, firefighters, streets, sidewalks, parks, and a vibrant main street. Each of us use many of these services every day, and others, well, we're happy when they're around in times of need. Businesses and visitors may want quality services. City property tax only increases 1% each year. The problem is that Washington's population is growing much more than 1%. In fact, by 2025, more than 830,000 people are expected to move here, and most will live in cities. And then there's inflation, the price increase of specific items over time. For cities, the cost of inflation, or the cost of providing services, grows faster than 1%. Simply put, property tax does not keep up with rising inflation and population growth. We all want to live in a vibrant city, so let's work together to make sure property tax keeps pace. Cable access channels are critical tools for local government. They provide important information about issues, services, and programs, as well as local emergencies. They also allow you to watch your local elected officials in action. Through the provision of governmental access channels, our communities are kept informed, educated, and entertained. Where else can you get information about your local government? Make sure everyone has a voice. Support your local government access channel.
Welcome to this edition of the Pasco Pulse. I'm Michael Hinao, Environmental Compliance Coordinator for the City of Pasco. You can expect to see more trucks along Foster-Walls Road in the coming weeks, as they deliver millions of gallons of material to the Process Water Reuse Facility, or PWRF. This facility takes processed water from food processing plants and turns it into water that can be used to irrigate agricultural fields. The PWRF can already process about 1 billion gallons of water from food processing plants every year. But with Dairy Gold set to open in the coming months, and other processors expanding their operations, the demand is about to get much higher. That means this facility has to be expanded. The upgraded PWRF will provide a more complete treatment for the processed water before its use for irrigation. That will make it better for the environment, and should make it smell better, too. What does this have to do with those delivery trucks along Foster-Walls Road? They're bringing in millions of gallons of material to kickstart our anaerobic digestors. We will have two digestors, each digester is 34 million gallons, where microorganisms will help clean the water from food processors. Those microorganisms also create renewable natural gas, which will be collected and sold to a local distributor. The next step in cleaning the processed water takes place in a greenhouse, where we will use algae to remove some of the nitrogen from the water. Algae also takes out carbon dioxide out of the air, helping us breathe a little easier. Finally, the treated processed water will be stored in newly-expended holding ponds into its needed for irrigation. The upgraded facility is scheduled to be up and running by the end of this year. You can find more information about how this project was funded on the city website. For the Pasco Pulse, I'm Michael Hinao.
Welcome to the Pasco Sporting Complex, the perfect venue for softball and baseball tournaments of all sizes. With six recently upgraded fields, our complex is designed for top-quality play, making it tournament-ready nearly year-round. Our dedicated maintenance team works tirelessly to ensure the fields are always in pristine condition, so your tournament can run smoothly from start to finish. But that's not all. The complex offers a full experience for both players and families. Enjoy our splash pad and playground, keeping everyone entertained between games. Plus, grab a bite at our convenient concession stand, perfect for refueling after an exciting game. Easily accessible for major highways, the complex features plenty of convenient parking and is just minutes away from hotels and restaurants, ensuring your team and fans have everything they need nearby. Book your next tournament today at the Pasco Sporting Complex, where great games and unforgettable moments happen.
Have you noticed things getting crowded lately? Washington's population is growing. By 2025, 833,000 people are expected to move to Washington State. That's the equivalent of another Richland, Vancouver, Tacoma, Spokane, Bellingham, and Yakima combined, or 12 packed Seahawk stadiums. Two-thirds of the state's population already live in cities, because cities are where we live, learn, work, and play. State law actually encourages growth in cities, to preserve our farmlands and open spaces, and to be efficient with your tax donors. And this means that in many cities, budgets are already stretched thin, and we need to figure out how to serve our growing population. More people living and working in cities means more demand for services like parks, transportation, police, fire, water, and sewer. All these things cost money. Growth is happening. We all need to work together to plan and pay for it.
Pie Sharks began just as a love for baking. I went back to college when the pandemic hit, used my GI Bill from the Air Force to help pay me to go to school, and over the course of it, started baking for fun, and found out that I really loved it, really enjoyed it. When I started making pies, I found that little mini extra ones I made with extra dough ended up being better than the big ones. So came forward with a few individual-sized miniature pies, so you can get a custom mix of flavors. So I've been here at the Specialty Kitchen since the beginning of July, and we're now entering into our second month of operation in this space. In another year, I'd love to have a few more people onboard. I'm working on getting connections with different coffee shops and other locations around the Tri-Cities, so that we can have unique flavors at each of those locations, start distributing them to those different areas. You may even see some that you can only get at those locations. For instance, Cafe de Arte, right around the corner over here, we discussed having some things like a devilish egg pie that I made that's really good with coffee and those combinations, where you may not be able to get it here in our shop, but when you go to those specific stores, it drives us both to them and to us at the same time. One of our best flavors that we've had for a long time has been the jalapeno cream cheese with bacon. Soon as I say those words, people are like, "A jalapeno popper pie?" I'm like, "Exactly, it's 100% what it is." And I always try and swap around the flavors. I switch out one sweet and one savory every week to change things up, and whichever was the lowest performing is what gets swapped. And that jalapeno bacon cream cheese, it's never coming off the menu. It's stayed on there permanently. Get a lot of really positive review on cheesecake that we make as well. It's no bake, real creamy, and the lemon has been a big pop as well. Pie Sharks is a small, family-owned operation that is excited to grow and develop here in the Tri-Cities, and I look forward to providing delicious treats to anyone and everyone who has a hankering for pie.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ben Zieggen with the Tri-City Animal Shelter. We have some exciting news for all pet owners out there. We know how stressful it can be when a beloved pet goes missing, and we're here to help. That's why we've launched our new online lost and found pet reporting system. This system is a straightforward way for you to report if your pet has gone missing. Just visit our website, fill out a simple form, and your lost pet report will be up and running. It's quick and effective, ensuring your pet's information is shared with the right people immediately. But there's more. Our website now features an interactive map for found pets. This means if someone finds a lost pet, they can report it on our site, and it'll show up on the map. If you've lost your pet, you can check this map to see if someone has already found them. It's a great way to connect lost pets with their owners, quickly and efficiently. We're really proud of this new tool, and believe it's going to make a big difference in reuniting pets with their families. At the Tri-City's Animal Shelter, we're not just about sheltered animals. We're about keeping them safe and ensuring they're part of our community. For more details, check out our website at animalsheltertc.com, or feel free to call area code 509-545-3740. We're always here to help. Thanks for watching this edition of Pasco Pulse. This is Ben Zieggen, wishing you and your pets a safe and joyful day. This is Ben Zieggen, wishing you and your pets a safe and joyful day.
Hi, I'm Lieutenant Thomas Groom with the Pasco Police Department, and I'm here today to discuss how we as a department work to not only be in our community, but to be a part of our community. Our philosophy is grounded in community-oriented policing. We believe that the best form of security arises not just from simply patrolling the streets, but from building bridges with our residents. Through community engagement, we continuously strive to forge partnerships that lead to a safer and better quality of life in Pasco. Beginning with our primary service, patrol, we try to demonstrate this philosophy. Rather than our officers simply responding to calls for service, handling the call, and moving on to the next task, we encourage our officers to identify the underlying issues and work with the community to address the issues with the hope of preventing future incidents. Our patrol officers contact a significant amount of our community every day, and their interactions are paramount in building relationships. Our area resource officers are another branch of this vision. By assigning officers to specific areas of the city annually, we ensure they have the opportunity to deeply understand the needs and concerns of their specific zones. This familiarity doesn't just foster trust, but creates a two-way dialogue where both officers and citizens can share and act on community insights. Similarly engaged are our school resource officers. They play a critical role in ensuring the safety and well-being of our younger generation. By being present in our schools, they not only act as protectors, but as mentors, fostering positive relationships between students and law enforcement. We also boost our community engagement initiatives through more entertaining means, like our Community Engagement Canine Goose. You may also see officers at parks and events pushing around a palaeta cart laden with frozen treats. Both Goose and our palaetas are intended to build friendly connections in the community by creating interactions between the community and our police outside of a typical enforcement contact. Our mission at the Pasco Police Department isn't solely about policing. It's about being a part of the community we're in. To learn more about our community engagement activities or to get involved, don't hesitate to contact us at 509-545-3421 or visit us at the website pascopeleague.com. For the Pasco Pulse, this is Lieutenant Thomas Groom. Thanks for watching. It's 10:13. We are going to extend another 15 minutes, so we'll be back at 10:30. Thank you. Hi, I'm Lieutenant Thomas Groom with the Pasco Police Department, and I'm here today to discuss how we as a department work to not only be in our community, but to be a part of our community. Our philosophy is grounded in community-oriented policing. We believe that the best form of security arises not just from simply patrolling the streets, but from building bridges with our residents. Through community engagement, we continuously strive to forge partnerships that lead to a safer and better quality of life in Pasco. Beginning with our primary service, patrol, we try to demonstrate this philosophy. Rather than our officers simply responding to calls for service, handling the call, and moving on to the next task, we encourage our officers to identify the underlying issues and work with the community to address the issues with the hope of preventing future incidents. Our patrol officers contact a significant amount of our community every day, and their interactions are paramount in building relationships. Our area resource officers are another branch of this vision. By assigning officers to specific areas of the city annually, we ensure they have the opportunity to deeply understand the needs and concerns of their specific zones. This familiarity doesn't just foster trust, but creates a two-way dialogue where both officers and citizens can share and act on community insights. Similarly engaged are our school resource officers. They play a critical role in ensuring the safety and well-being of our younger generation. By being present in our schools, they not only act as protectors, but as mentors, fostering positive relationships between students and law enforcement. We also boost our community engagement initiatives through more entertaining means, like our Community Engagement Canine Goose. You may also see officers at parks and events pushing around a palaeta cart laden with frozen treats. Both Goose and our palaetas are intended to build friendly connections in the community by creating interactions between the community and our police outside of a typical enforcement contact. Our mission at the Pasco Police Department isn't solely about policing. It's about being a part of the community we're in. To learn more about our community engagement activities or to get involved, don't hesitate to contact us at 509-545-3421 or visit us at the website pascopeleague.com. For the Pasco Pulse, this is Lieutenant Thomas Groom. Thanks for watching.
Welcome to the Pasco Specialty Kitchen in downtown Pasco, the heart of culinary innovation in our community. Whether you're a seasoned chef or just starting out, our fully-equipped, certified commercial kitchen is here to help bring your culinary dreams to life. At PSK, we offer a unique opportunity for food entrepreneurs to utilize our pass-through windows, a direct way to connect your delicious creations with the community. Getting started at PSK is simple. The process begins with reaching out to our team, who will guide you every step of the way, from the initial application to getting your business up and running in our kitchen. Our application process typically takes 30 to 45 days, allowing us to ensure all permits and licenses are in order. Planning ahead is key to make the most of your time in our kitchen. Our clients come from all walks of life, including bakers, caterers, and mobile food vendors. They all share one goal: to create something special in a space designed for success. To become a PSK client, you'll need a valid business license, government-issued ID, business liability insurance, and contact information. After onboarding, you'll also need a City of Pasco business endorsement, food handlers' cards, and a food vendor permit. With a $175 onboarding fee, you'll be ready to turn your culinary vision into reality in a space that meets all health and safety regulations. At Pasco's Specialty Kitchen, we're more than just a kitchen. We're a community of passionate creators. We provide the tools, space, and support to help your business thrive. Ready to take the next step? Contact us today, and let's get cooking together at the Pasco Specialty Kitchen.
Curious about where your property tax goes? Our property taxes support all kinds of basic public services like schools, ports, hospitals, social services, public safety, and facilities that you use on a daily basis. And yet, when we live in a city, only a small share of the property tax actually goes to the city. It pays for things like police officers, firefighters, streets, sidewalks, parks, and a vibrant main street. Each of us use many of these services every day, and others, well, we're happy when they're around in times of need. Businesses and visitors may want quality services. City property tax only increase 1% each year. The problem is that Washington's population is growing much more than 1%. In fact, by 2025, more than 830,000 people are expected to move here, and most will live in cities. And then there's inflation, the price increase of specific items over time. For cities, the cost of inflation or the cost of providing services grows faster than 1%. Simply put, property tax does not keep up with rising inflation and population growth. We all want to live in a vibrant city, so let's work together to make sure property tax keeps pace.
Cable access channels are critical tools for local government. They provide important information about issues, services, and programs, as well as local emergencies. They also allow you to watch your local elected officials in action. Through the provision of governmental access channels, our communities are kept informed, educated, and entertained. Where else can you get information about your local government? Make sure everyone has a voice. Support your local government access channel.
Welcome to this edition of the Pasco Pulse. I'm Michael Hinao, Environmental Compliance Coordinator for the City of Pasco. You can expect to see more trucks along Foster Wells Road in the coming weeks as they deliver millions of gallons of material to the Process Water Reuse Facility, or PWRF. This facility takes processed water from food processing plants and turns it into water that can be used to irrigate agricultural fields. The PWRF can already process about 1 billion gallons of water from food processing plants every year. But with their goal set to open in the coming months and other processors expanding their operations, the demand is about to get much higher. That means this facility has to be expanded. The upgraded PWRF will provide a more complete treatment for the processed water before its use for irrigation. That will make it better for the environment and should make us smell better, too. What does this have to do with those delivery trucks along Foster Wells Road? They're bringing in millions of gallons of material to kickstart our anaerobic digesters. We will have two digesters, each digester is 34 million gallons, where microorganisms will help clean the water from food processors. Those microorganisms also create renewable natural gas, which will be collected and sold to a local distributor. The next step in cleaning the processed water takes place in a greenhouse, where we will use algae to remove some of the nitrogen from the water. Algae also takes out carbon dioxide out of the air, helping us breathe a little easier. Finally, the treated processed water will be stored in newly expanded holding ponds until it's needed for irrigation. The upgraded facility is scheduled to be up and running by the end of this year. You can find more information about how this project was funded on the city website. For the Pasco Pulse, I'm Michael Hinao.
Welcome to the Pasco Sporting Complex, the perfect venue for softball and baseball tournaments of all sizes. With six recently upgraded fields, our complex is designed for top-quality play, making it tournament-ready nearly year-round. Our dedicated maintenance team works tirelessly to ensure the fields are always in pristine condition, so your tournament can run smoothly from start to finish. But that's not all. The complex offers a full experience for both players and families. Enjoy our splash pad and playground, keeping everyone entertained between games. Plus, grab a bite at our convenient concession stand, perfect for refueling after an exciting game. Easily accessible for major highways, the complex features plenty of convenient parking and is just minutes away from hotels and restaurants, ensuring your team and fans have everything they need nearby. Book your next tournament today at the Pasco Sporting Complex, or great games and unforgettable moments happen.
Have you noticed things getting crowded lately? Washington's population is growing. By 2025, 833,000 people are expected to move to Washington State. That's the equivalent of another Richland, Vancouver, Tacoma, Spokane, Bellingham, and Yakima combined, or 12 packed Seahawk stadiums. Two-thirds of the state's population already live in cities because cities are where we live, learn, work, and play. State law actually encourages growth in cities to preserve our farmlands and open spaces and to be efficient with your tax donors. And this means that in many cities, budgets are already stretched thin, and we need to figure out how to serve our growing population. More people living and working in cities means more demand for services like parks, transportation, police, fire, water, and sewer. All these things cost money. Growth is happening. We all need to work together to plan and pay for it.
Pie Sharks began just as a love for baking. I went back to college when the pandemic hit, used my GI Bill from the Air Force to help pay me to go to school, and over the course of it, started baking for fun and found out that I really loved it, really enjoyed it. When I started making pies, I found that little mini extra ones I made with extra dough ended up being better than the big ones. So came forward with a few individual-sized miniature pies, so you can get a custom mix of flavors. So I've been here at the Specialty Kitchen since the beginning of July, and we're now entering into our second month of operation in this space. In another year, I'd love to have a few more people onboard. I'm working on getting connections with different coffee shops and other locations around the Tri-Cities so that we can have unique flavors at each of those locations, start distributing them to those different areas. You may even see some that you can only get at those locations. For instance, Caffey de Arte, right around the corner over here. We've discussed having some things like a devilish egg pie that I made that's really good with coffee and those combinations, where you may not be able to get it here in our shop, but when you go to those specific stores, it drives us both to them and to us at the same time. One of our best flavors that we've had for a long time has been the jalapeno cream cheese with bacon. Soon as I say those words, people are like, "A jalapeno popper pie?" I'm like, "Exactly, it's 100% what it is." And I always try and swap around the flavors. I switch out one sweet and one savory every week to change things up, and whichever was the lowest performing is what gets swapped. And that jalapeno bacon cream cheese, it's never coming off the menu. It's stayed on there permanently. Get a lot of really positive review on cheesecake that we make as well. It's no bake, real creamy, and the lemon has been a big pop as well. Pie Sharks is a small, family-owned operation that is excited to grow and develop here in the Tri-Cities, and I look forward to providing delicious treats to anyone and everyone who has a hankering for pie.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ben Zieggen with the Tri-City Animal Shelter. We have some exciting news for all pet owners out there. We know how stressful it can be when a beloved pet goes missing, and we're here to help. That's why we've launched our new online Lost and Found Pet Reporting System. This system is a straightforward way for you to report if your pet has gone missing. Just visit our website, fill out a simple form, and your lost pet report will be up and running. It's quick and effective, ensuring your pet's information is shared with the right people immediately. But there's more. Our website now features an interactive map for found pets. This means if someone finds a lost pet, they can report it on our site, and it'll show up on the map. If you've lost your pet, you can check this map to see if someone has already found them. It's a great way to connect lost pets with their owners quickly and efficiently. We're really proud of this new tool and believe it's going to make a big difference in reuniting pets with their families. At the Tri-Cities Animal Shelter, we're not just about sheltering animals. We're about keeping them safe and ensuring they're part of our community. For more details, check out our website at animalsheltertc.com or feel free to call area code 509-545-3740. We're always here to help. Thanks for watching this edition of Pasco Pulse. This is Ben Zieggen, wishing you and your pets a safe and joyful day.
It's 10:29. We are going to extend five minutes, so we'll be back at 10:35. Thank you.
It's 10:29. We are going to extend five minutes, so we'll be back at 10:35. Thank you. It is now 10:40. Thank you for joining us. We have finished our executive session. This meeting is now adjourned. Have a great Thanksgiving.